Thank you, Ms. Fagan. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Township of West Orange Planning Board meeting, scheduled for December 3rd, 2025, 6:00 p.m. The West Orange Planning Board meeting. Okay, can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lucy. Oh, thank you, both of you. The statement, right?
Yes.
Statement of, good evening. Statement of compliance. Notice of this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on the township bulletin board, township website calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 p.m. General, roll call, please.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Cardoza.
Present.
Ms. Caffler. Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Nobrin. Mr. Wooks. Mr. Wooks.
Here.
Ms. Woman Scarp, May McCartney.
Present.
Mr. Waino. Mr. Wayne.
Yes. Present.
And Chairman Bagans running late.
What's the next thing on?
The next thing is, okay. The next planning board, the next planning board regular meeting will be held on January 7, 2026, at 7:30 p.m. via Zoom. We did the roll call. I need to make a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. General, roll call, please, on the motion.
We just, we just go.
Just a voice vote.
Just go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, we'll now go into executive session and come back.
Is that conference room down the hall open?
Yes, it is.
Hi, my.
Sure.
Riding a bike.
My phone are live.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're coming back from the executive meeting. Um, we have the first thing, our, uh, resolution twenty six P D. I'm sorry. So we have to.
Minutes.
No.
It's a scrap meeting. It's about our, um, hearing dates.
Okay, hearing dates. Okay. Dates. Okay. Were the dates published on the website?
It, there is a link, yes.
Okay.
I can have, uh, Joe pull them up in the.
Yeah, Joe, could you put up this crab meeting? Uh, I think we have all of our dates on. Yes, it did.
Oh, he's got nothing.
Okay, good. Okay, these are the dates for the, uh, scrap and the planning board for twenty twenty six. We have a motion to adopt these.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman. Motion's high second on the motion, Yamalat.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
Mister Klein?
Yes.
Mister Morgan? Mister Wooks?
Yes.
Mister Cardoza?
Yes.
Miss Caffeter? Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
May McCartney?
Yes.
Mister Wayno?
Yes.
Chairman Bago?
Yes. The dates are adopted. Hey, Miss McGovern, would you swear in the township professionals, please?
Okay, we have a few tonight. Uh, I guess just for the first application, um, we could raise our, our hands. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, if you could just put your names on the record because we have a different, um, well, Malvika is always here as our planning expert, but our engineer is different tonight.
Yeah, Sean Savage with Matrix New World Engineer.
Mark, David, I have a new instance.
And I think we have a, we have Jordan in the back there when we, when we move towards the next application, I swear, yeah.
PB twenty five dash oh four Blue Violet Grow Incorporated, block sixty two, lot twenty two dot oh one, zone one seventy six Ashland Avenue. The applicant is proposing to operate a cannabis cultivation manufacturing facility on the subject premises, which is located in the I industrial zone for the applicant.
William Sullivan, Scurency Hollenbeck, on behalf of that.
Welcome, Mister Sullivan.
Yes. So.
Oh, sure. Yeah, William Sullivan, Scurency Hollenbeck, on behalf of the applicant, Blue Violet Grow LLC.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Uh, we're here, uh, tonight to hear an application by Blue Violet Grow LLC for a property located at seventy six Ashland Avenue, uh, block sixty two, lots twenty two oh one, thirty two, and thirty four, uh, with thirty two and thirty four being for ac- uh, access only. The property is located in your I zone. Uh, we're proposing to operate a cannabis manufacturing and cultivation facility there. Uh, we have obtained a conditional license from the state of New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And by resolution of the council, uh, this council adopted December tenth of last year. The council declared its local support for this facility, uh, under the cannabis, uh, regulations, the state regulations, that what we call a resolution of local support, while recognizing that the project cannot proceed, obviously, without local land use board approval. Uh, so, uh, the, uh, council has, uh, adopted that resolution and consistent with that resolution, uh, on December fourth of last year, Ms. Gary Adams sent the letter to the CRC that is required confirming that the facility complies with the local zoning, subject to, uh, the review of this board or any other appropriate local land use board. Uh, so, um, under you, the cannabis ordinance, and I know that you, uh, heard a similar application for actually the same tax lot, but a different building, uh, about, uh, a year ago, um, the, the, uh, so now you're familiar with this, the ordinance permits, uh, these facilities as permitted conditional uses in the zoning. And, and as you know, because, well, most of you have been here a long time, uh, a conditional use means that the use is permitted if it meets the conditions in the ordinance. And that's what our job is here tonight is to show you that we meet the conditions of that ordinance, and I think that we'll, we will successfully do that. Um, we're also requesting minor, uh, site plan approval. Now, uh, you may recall that, um, April of twenty twenty four, you adopted a resolution granting conditional use approval and minor site plan approval that, that to, for the project that I just mentioned, where the applicant's name was Yurkana, uh, for a similar use in a separate building on the same property. Now, that approval, that resolution had a number of conditions in it, because as you, you may recall, uh, the site plan was not complete. There were a number of issues that were raised with the site plan. And so the approval was conditioned on satisfaction of those conditions. Uh, and there were the typical resolution compliance letters that were exchanged, uh, between, um, council, uh, actually between the board planner, I believe, and, or board engineer. Now, it was Mister Hess, the board engineer, uh, uh, and, and the applicant's attorney. Uh, those revised plans have not been submitted by Yurkana. Uh, and so we're here tonight to request not only the conditional use approval, but also we are now prepared with the, the cooperation, the property owner, to do all of the things that were supposed to be done as conditions of the approval for Yurkana. So, um, that will satisfy, you know, everybody. As far as I know, Yurkana is still going ahead, but they have not revised uh, the plans. And so if you, the board is inclined to grant this approval, then we'll have a site plan for the whole site, for the whole lot, uh, that satisfies hopefully everybody's, uh, concerns and conditions. Now, there are several non-conforming conditions on the site. We are not expanding them or increasing the non-conformity. Nevertheless, out of abundance of caution and at the direction of your planner, uh, we have identified them as variances and, um, are requesting approval of those variances. And we do have planning testimony if the board needs that testimony at the appropriate time. Uh, so that's, uh, that's where, uh, that's the introduction. And I would like to begin, if I may, by calling the representative, the applicant, Jen Hardell.
Go right ahead. Anyway, we want, uh.
Yeah, that's fine. You know, you can sit next to you. That's fine.
So you're just doing this version, right?
It's Hartet, Hartnett. Could you please?
Hardell, yes.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Uh, Jennifer Hardell, H A R D E L L.
And, uh, Miss Hardell, what is your position with, uh, Blue Violet Grow LLC?
Um, the founder, owner, and CEO of Blue Violet Crowe.
And is Blue Violet the leaseholder for a portion of the lots that are subject of the application? You, you're using a portion of the lot, one of, one building?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Introduce, I, I, I know that people who have sat through council meetings, I've heard, uh, some of this before, but introduce.
Sure.
The group to the blue box.
Sure. Um, yeah, some of you know me from sitting in many council meetings over the last year. But, um, I, actually, the year previous, this last year, I've, I've spent the time, uh, working with my engineers, architects, and security teams to build up the plans to, to sit in front of you all. But to backtrack a little bit, um, I'm about three years into the process. I received an early, uh, conditional license from the state. Um, you know, one of the first licenses and the first handful that they gave out as a women-owned, um, company. I received a cultivation license and also a manufacturing license. Um, and then, you know, uh, secured, uh, property here in, in West Orange and worked, uh, with the town to receive a letter of support, um, I guess, not this year, but the year prior. Uh, worked with the, the town also to reopen the moratorium, which was closed at the time. It was a, a big, long process, but we got that opened up. Uh, I was given a letter of support and a resolution and have been moving forward to try and put this, this project into, um, bring it to life. Uh, it's, it's taken a lot of years, a lot of time. Um, but I believe that we've put together some great plans, um, a great team, and I'm looking to carry this to the finish line. Uh, I have the wherewithal to do it. I've been running operations for the last twenty eight years uh, for consumer product goods. Um, I'm also, uh, an entrepreneur and founder and CEO of a national beverage brand. So I'm familiar, um, with not only manufacturing, but also building a business, operating a business, and, and, and running one as well. So I'm trying to take that skill set and that business sense and build out this cultivation and manufacturing site to, um, you know, to, to take not only, uh, my business, but also move forward the industry. Uh, it's a woman-owned industry, a woman-owned business. Uh, my focus is on wellness and health. And, uh, the products will also be, um, you know, wellness and health-based, and we'll be able to, um, you know, hopefully put the, the product that is cultivated and manufactured in my building can go onto the shelves of the retail dispensaries in West Orange. So I know that a lot of times they're getting their product from other towns, um, but I would, you know, secure their shelves with product that's being manufactured here in their, in their town as well, to make sure they also have supply at, at all times.
And what is the difference? But you're, you're doing a manufacturing and cultivation facility. What is, what is the difference between those two terms?
So cultivation is, um, the growing of the plant, um, and manufacturing is the processing of the plant. So if someone has a cultivation license, they can only grow the plant and, um, sell the plant to the dispensary as a, a full plant. Um, they don't have the license to then take that and, and break it down into a packaged good. So with a manufacturing license, um, not only can I process the flower that is cultivated in our building, I can also, uh, manufacture, you know, product flower for micro cultivators or other cultivators who don't have a manufacturing license and need a manufacturer to take their product and, and process that as well. So that's the difference.
Correct. Uh, let's do a couple of, uh, operational, uh, i- issues that are important to the board.
Sure.
Uh, what, what are the proposed hours and days of operation?
So, you know, similar to many other manufacturing companies, um, it'll be a Monday to Friday operation, um, and at an eight to four P M. So you're not going to have late hours, um, working or traffic coming in and out at night. It's, it's a, you know, nine to five type of operation, Monday through Friday.
And there's no retail sales of product here currently?
No, there's no retail at all. And opposite of, we're actually the opposite of retail where you won't, you know, know that word there. There's not any major signage. We're not making a lot of noise. We kind of want to go under the radar versus being out on display.
And, uh, you will have, obviously, employees, uh, coming. Um, you, uh, have agreed to a limitation pursuant to your license to have no more than ten employees on the product, right?
That's correct.
And, uh, so we have those folks coming in, and then, uh, deliveries and, and pickups. Explain what kinds of deliveries and pickups you would have in the vehicles that they would arrive in.
Well, deliveries coming into the building, um, would be very limited. I would say, you know, maybe two to seven a month. You're talking about, um, so maybe some box trucks that are dropping off packaging, um, non-cannabis related. So just plastic, you know, plastic goods or maybe soil or, or things of that nature. Um, but that, those deliveries are not on the regular. Um, so maybe, you know, two to, two to five or two to seven a month. Anything going out from the building, there will only be two trucks that are taking things out of the building. One, which my security team will speak to is our, you know, uh, security vaulted trucks that are taking the product from the facility, uh, to the dispensaries. Um, and then the only, the other truck that will be leaving the facility, we also have a representative here of a waste management company that I retained that is, uh, approved and licensed by the state to remove cannabis from a, a facility in the proper way.
So now you know that we're here for a conditional use approval, and there are a series of conditions that have been in the ordinance. So, uh, let's deal with the condition number one first, which is, uh, as drafted in the, uh, ordinance, the license cannabis entity shall be required to have a local license pursuant to chapter five, section thirty four, the township of West Orange, Newcastle. Um, and where do you stand with regard to the local license process, as you understand this?
A local license for West Orange?
Yes.
As I understand it, it's that, um, you know, you receive your letter of support, your resolution, then your planning board approval. Um, and then I assume that the local license came after planning board approval.
So that's, that's our understanding, Mr. Chairman, as well, that. So that's that's our understanding, Mr. Chairman, as well, that the. The way the licensing process is supposed to work is that the local license cannot be issued. Until the act of the planning board has made its decision, which leads down to. And so we are prepared as a condition of approval, of course, to obtain that that local license. And your kind of application went through the same steps when it was here and did not have a local license. You gave him the approval of conditional use of verbal site plan of verbal, and they still have to get their local license. I know that there's been a lot of. Effort at the council and administration level to try to, you know, move that process and get it. Going, but for the purposes of tonight's hearing, we will stipulate that we will get both licenses as a condition of approval. Jumping to condition number five. Will the entity be housed in a vehicle for any movable or mobile structure?
No.
Will it be allowed to operate as a home occupation?
No.
That's number six. Number nine, will there be any on site consumption?
No.
That's condition number nine. I have no other questions, Ms. Hardell.
Great. Mayor McCartney, if you have any questions, Ms. Hardell.
Thank you, Chairman. Welcome, Ms. Hardell.
Thank you.
I appreciate your perseverance. It's been a long haul. I do have a question about mitigation, smell mitigation. Is that will that be part of this plan, or can you talk about that now?
Yes, we have a very detailed technical response to that. I have my engineers and architects here that can walk you that can walk the everybody through what will be in place. But just an overall description is, you know, there's. The technology has come a long way. Especially it's almost, you know, over the last year, over the last five years or 10 years, which they'll get into, but there's. Major air circulation systems that are built into our our plan, filter filtration. The air is, you know, again, I'm not an engineer, so they'll speak to that this much more eloquently, but there's a filter. Filtration system where the air is circulated and recirculated through filters, carbon filters before it's released. Out into into the public, but they'll give you a much better description.
And you also mentioned about your security system or your security plan, so we'll hear about that also.
Yes, you will. Hector Corchados here, who had security, who is a very long past. The police force.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkes, do you have any questions?
You're not going to have retailers. Does your license include retail?
It does not.
It doesn't. It's just to.
It's just to cultivate and manufacture, yes. So I, my customer is the is the retail, is a dispensary. So that's who dispensaries buy their product from are cultivators and manufacturers. So I provide the goods for dispensary. So I'm not for the end user.
Okay, so all deliveries would be between eight and four, you're saying. It won't be anything earlier or later than that?
Correct.
Okay.
During the working hours.
No, the question is.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Garena, do you have any questions, Ms. Hardell on the testimony?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Alford. Do you have any questions, Ms. Hardell?
I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Cadoz, do you have any questions, Ms. Hardell on testimony?
Not this time.
Counselperson Scarp, do you have any questions, Ms. Hardell on testimony?
Just a brief one. Thank you for your professionalism and your perseverance.
Oh, thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. Look forward to having your attention.
Thank you.
I, you know, my concern has been the same as as Mayor McCartney's. Because even though it's an industrial zone, it backs right up to all residential properties. So I'm very concerned about learning more about, you know, the smell mitigation and all of that. Are there others that are in basically residential areas that are so close to residential?
You know, they're they're in the process now. I think there may be one or two that are open up in the North Jersey area, but, you know, traditionally, these were put out in. Farm areas, right? So New Jersey being a populated state. It's 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 new territory. I'm not going to lie. I mean, this is it's new territory for a lot of states, especially these populated areas. But the the benefit there is that you have access to high level engineers. Who are now coming from all other industries, right? As this industry becomes growing and becomes more mainstream. You have the best of the best that are coming from their fields of filtration and HVACs, and they're bringing that technology into this industry. And you're getting some of the best of the best when you're in New Jersey and you're in the New York and Connecticut, the areas that. Didn't have this industry prior. So you're getting access to things that maybe the the farmers, they didn't need it. Out in middle of nowhere, but they also had no knowledge of it. So I feel strong that we're going to take a, you know, a nice. Preventative measure ahead of time. I mean, I'm a parent. I have middle schoolers, you know, I live in a neighborhood. I wouldn't put anything in someone else's neighborhood that I wouldn't want in my own. So and I'm going to make sure that it is. Safe in every measure, not only odor mitigation, but security. And I want to I want the community to be happy we're here, you know, it's this is not, I don't want this to be looked down upon. It's it should be a a good thing.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions, Ms. Hardell on testimony?
Good evening, ma'am. Thank you for being here. No questions at this time, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Capra, do you have any questions, Ms. Hardell on testimony?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lurica, do you have any questions, Ms. Hardell on testimony?
Just a couple of questions. The state license, I believe, applications and you've been issued that in July when you're going to.
Yes.
Just for more than the public understanding. Does it have a renewal process or is it authorized for public?
Yeah, so I received my conditional license for manufacturing cultivation, and then I. I'm now on my way. I'm in my it's called your conversion stage. So I'm in the conversion stage now of going from conditional to annual. So I'm in that middle part here where the conditional people before they get into conversion, they have a lot of. Dates, right, that they have to deal with, which is what I was very nervous about when I was going for my letter of support. I'm now farther in the process where I'm in the conversion stage, so I don't have. A lot of those same, you know, time restrictions. But I have the time restrictions of I've been paying rent for two years and and trying to build out the thing, but I don't have a expiration date per se for this. I think once I receive the annual license, you have to be then up and running, I think it's within a year. Before then, so so the dates are there, they get removed, and then they come back to you again once you're at your annual stage.
All right, thank you. And that's what we wanted to just understand. Let's see if you don't have to. You're good right now till you get your annual license.
Correct. Yes, you get re reviewed, yes.
To go back on one since I just want to clarify for directly, you said the hours of operations are maybe eight to four.
Yes.
And the delivery timings are going to be between that, because I think for cannabis cultivation and manufacturing. Our ordinance is very specific how when the deliveries are happening.
Yes.
It has to happen between those versions.
Yes, it would. That would because that's when our employees would be there.
And in terms of the maximum number controlling, I know your license said ten. Is that the maximum during the shift, or will there be, you know, the early shift where you'll be fine or something like that?
The maximum would be 10 people, but there wouldn't be 10 people at all times. I would say that, you know, you you may have on some days. Two people or five people. It's. There's long periods of time, I think, I mean, if you think about farming or growing, right? There's periods of time where you're you're not doing much. The the farmer himself. Will be in there maintaining the plants and stuff. When you you bump up to those 10 people, it's when it's time where the harvest is done. It moves down to the manufacturing floor, and then your your team comes in and they process everything. So it's it fluctuates, but it doesn't really go over 10. So you're, you know, from two to 10 people at any given time.
In terms of delivery, I know you mentioned the packages coming in two to seven times a month. How many deliveries are you expecting to go out every day or, you know, with the products that you're manufacturing?
Um, I mean, I guess Hector, how often do the trucks? Sorry.
If you don't know.
Sorry, I'm going to probably defer to Hector because he's doing this for other facilities that are up and running right now. So I don't know if there's a security. Like they do it on certain days of the week, or if it was an every day. So I am going to defer to to Hector on that. Sorry for not understanding that.
If you don't know, you're so sorry.
Okay.
Do you, because you are the founder of the state, are there any chemicals and, you know, pesticides, fertilizers, or? Could we get a list of those items, especially for our fire department and police department to have that?
Yes, absolutely.
And the quantities on which it will be stored.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. I'm familiar with that as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Here's a letter from Hiagul dated December first, twenty twenty five. Have you received that? We will be answering all the questions.
Yes, we believe that through the testimony of of others, we will be able to address those.
Okay, so you'll pick they'll they'll pick the numbers in the letter and they will address them one at a time? That will make it easy for the board as you go through as you go through the testimony. That would be.
Trying to be conditioned when I identify the conditions, but if you want me to go through.
But there are things that besides the Yurkana conditions. Okay, so it'd be it'd be just easier to do that. Okay. Do any members, I'm sorry. Mr. Savage, do you have any questions?
No, I did fine.
Thank you. Okay, do any members of the public have any questions, Mr. Hardell on her testimony? Please come up and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions, Mr. Hardell, Mrs. Hardell on her testimony? Please come up and be identified. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My next witness is William Moran. He's our engineer.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're gonna need the plans, right? You have to be sworn in first.
Yeah. I have.
The easel.
No, I have this stuff on.
Oh, you don't need a physical easel? Okay. Okay. All right, you need to be sworn. These are going to be the engineering plans.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Have a seat, sir.
Mr. Moran, by whom are you employed?
I'm self employed.
And what's the name of your company?
William Moran.
Okay, all right. And you, you're you're appearing this evening. You familiarized yourself with the plans and were prepared by Mr. Golden, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and Mr. Golden cannot be here this evening because what?
Because of medical issues, and he was totally prepared for the for the Zoom meeting, but since it was in person. He asked me to attend for him.
And you've worked with Mr. Golden for a number of years.
Yes, I've known him for a few decades, yes.
Now, we need to qualify you as as a witness. So can you provide the board with your educational and professional background?
Yeah, I have a bachelor of science and a master of science in engineering from N G I T. And I have over 35 years of experience, appeared before numerous boards, actually before this board, probably about 30 years ago.
Probably no one was here then.
Not even me.
I offered Mr. Moran as an expert in, you have an existing New Jersey.
My license is current.
Yes, current. I offer Mr. Moran as an expert engineer.
Okay, and do any member of the board have any questions? Seeing none, we accept you as a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, sir.
Now, the the board has in front of it the a set of engineering plans, a two sheet, a set of plans, correct?
Yes.
And those were prepared by Mr. Golden, and you you familiarize yourself with.
Yes, I did.
All right, using those plans, and these these are identical to the plans that were in the. Packet presented to the board in response to Ms. Atty's. No, yeah, in response to Ms. Atty's first planning report.
Yes, I believe so. I can't see the revision date, but I believe.
Should be November 21st.
Yeah, it's not appearing, but. There we go. Yes, that's that's the current plan.
Okay, all right. Now, using that plan, can you explain, and again, this this board. In a little over a year ago, looked at this site, but there were probably new members and everybody needs a refresher. So. Can you explain this property, its existing condition, and the uses that are on it? And where the buildings are located that are relevant, well, where the building is located is relevant to this stuff?
Yeah, the the current lot is about point eight nine acres, of which ninety nine percent of is impervious. The existing uses on the site are the Yonkura site here. This application, Blue Violet, which is a vacant industrial building. And the residential, which is two two bedroom apartments and a deli.
So now. Ordinance condition two. Is related to a distance from a school building. So have you confirmed that the property in question is not within 500 feet of the property line of a property with school building?
Yes.
And condition three, it cannot be less than 500 feet from a house of worship. Have you confirmed it's not within 500? It's not within 500 feet of house?
Yes, we have.
Okay, all right. So then going to the proposed conditions. Probably the. The things that require the most explanation, because we've got multiple uses on this lot, is parking and circulation, right? So can you explain? How we arrived at our ultimate calculation that 38 parking spaces are required for all of the uses on this set?
Yeah, if you could move over to this section here, this is our parking calculations. You could zoom in, please. And. In the market, a little more. So the Yonkana site, which 1,200 square feet. This is from the previous your previous approval, 1,200 square feet with nine seats. That's the deli, so that's seven spaces. The two bedroom, I'm sorry, two unit, two bedroom. Apartments, they require six spaces based on R S I S. And the cultivation of. The Yonkana site was seven spaces. That's the office part of it. And then our application is based on a number of employees and a square footage. So we have one space per thousand square feet and 10 employees, so we have 19 spaces required there. So the total spaces required are 39. However, based on our supplying one electrical vehicle charging space, we get a credit one per one. So actually, our our required number of spaces is 38. And we're providing 40.
And there was in an earlier submission, we were including three spaces that were on street parking spaces, but we've eliminated those now, right?
Yes, it's all onsite parking.
So that's 40 spaces onsite. Okay, now, go back, Joe, if you could scroll back and look at the site again. So now, who parks where, right? That's important to figure out. So let's start with.
If you could slide over that way.
Where do the Yurkana employees park? Again, Yurkana is like this, if there are no retailers, no customers, where do the employees park?
These that are the spots that are quote unquote designated for the Yonkana bike. Use, and that's eight spaces. This is the E V charging space here. So the obviously, the eight spaces include the ADA spot too.
Okay, and we're going to get back to how they get there in a minute, but I just want to go through the uses first. The the spaces for Blue Violet, 16 spaces, I believe, on the southern side. The, uh, the spaces for, uh, Blue Violet, sixteen spaces, I believe, on the southern side.
Okay, actually, we'll, we'll, we'll go back down again, just the Blue Violet. Yeah, that's it. If you could zoom in a little.
So those spaces that are to the left of Blue Violet, there are sixteen others that, uh, that our, uh, employees will use, and that includes an ADA, uh, space, correct?
Yes, there's, there's ten on, on the, uh, I believe that's the east side. And, uh, and then there's two over here and five here. And we have two proposed compact spots here, so that, that supplies the nineteen spots for, uh, for the Blue Violet, uh, uh, use.
Okay, now, scroll up.
Yeah, this is a loading area here. Yeah, for the loading, loading area for the, uh, delivery vehicles.
All right, uh, okay, the residential and the deli, uh, the, uh, there are eight spaces for the, for the deli, correct, or nine?
It's nine, we're restriping to provide nine spaces.
All right, and the, uh, four spaces behind residential, those are for the tenants, uh, in that building, right?
Yes, that's correct. This spot here with the X on it, if, uh, if need be, we could have some, uh, uh, deed restriction, have a, a tandem spot here if required.
But, but the bottom line is that.
Yeah, that's not included.
We have enough spaces, we don't need parking.
Yeah, that's not, uh.
Okay, now, um, how do people get in and out of here? Uh, there, the site, uh, is, has the site where Yorcona and where we are has to be secured, we can't have people driving through, right?
Yes, this is an existing fence here that separates, uh, the residential and the deli, and there's also some residential here. That separates it from, uh, the, uh, proposed, uh, Blue Violet and Yorcona's s- space.
Okay.
So it, site's gonna be enclosed, if you could zoom down a little bit. Yeah, we have a proposed fence here also that's gonna enclose this entire, uh, industrial use.
So now, uh, going just back to the residential and deli, because I think they're the simplest ones, uh, the if, if I'm coming to the deli and I'm gonna park, uh, I'm turning into, uh, the, the driveway off of, uh,
Yes.
Ashland and I'm parking.
Yeah, the existing. They, they're, yep.
And if I live in the residential building, again, I'm coming in that driveway off of Ashland, I'm parking one of the four spaces, and then when I leave, I'm coming out in the same direct, I'm going, I'm going back out on that same driveway to Ashland, right?
Yes.
Okay, this is the only place I believe in the entire site where there is two-way traffic, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, and, uh, how, how, how else is this driveway on the left utilized? To the bar use of work for your foundation use?
This will be emergency, uh, uh, vehicle access. And they will have, uh, there's a proposed lockbox here for, uh, you know, a- a- access to, uh, to, to the, uh, industrial buildings, uh, at the rear of the site.
So then, other than for emergency access, um, we've really segregated uses here into parking for those uses, so that everything on the Ashland Avenue side is for those two uses, the residential and the deli, right?
That's correct.
Zoom down. Okay, so, yeah, uh, how do the employees and the deliveries, uh, and pickups get to Blue Violet and Yorcona?
So be an exit, um, via, via Park Ave entrance, um, it isn't shown here, but there's going to be a proposed access, uh, easement that, that will, uh, provide, you know, employee access, um, from park to, and, and the, and the, uh, delivery vehicles, uh, access and, and for emergency vehicles also.
Uh, and so, uh, how will they get into, from, from the easement area onto Lot twenty-two oh-one? Is there, uh, there's a fence there, right?
Yeah, there'll be a fence and a gate, right, in this location.
And, and a key fob?
Yeah, lockbox.
Lock, so then people will have to utilize that security measure to get in and park for Yorcona or Yorban.
Correct.
Now, are you aware of the fact that from Yorcona, there were, there was an easement across those two lots to the right, which are lots thirty-two and thirty-four? Uh, but we modified that, uh, that easement location, correct?
Yes, correct.
Right, and we did that because the, it appeared, I think to the board as well as to us, that the easement location, uh, approved, or discussed at least the last time, would have required people to drive over parking spaces.
That's correct.
Right, so with this formula, we now are able to get the vehicles in and out without interfering with the parking spaces on lots thirty-two and thirty-four.
Yes, the, the existing spaces here, yeah, I guess.
Okay, um, are we providing enough, uh, handicap parking?
Yes, we have two, two handicap locations, whoops. One is here and one is located further south here.
Uh, is there a barrier free path from those spaces into the building?
Yes, via the, uh, via the, uh, ADA striped, uh, you can see it's labeled as an access, the architect can, uh, discuss that a little bit more.
Okay, yeah, there will be some architecture testimony on, on confirmation of ADA components. Um, okay, uh, you identify where the EV parking, uh, space was, that will be operational when the business opens, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, how do we make sure that people park where they're supposed to park?
Be a, be a signage.
So for the spaces, the Yorcona spaces, at the bottom there, we're gonna have a sign there that says Yorcona parking only, something like that?
Right here. And then, obviously, the handicap stall will have the required legal, uh, uh, signage for that.
In terms of the ingress and egress, uh, as I mentioned earlier, certainly, uh, we have to do a new easement, um, and I've been working with counsel for the, uh, property owner, um, to, uh, to get that done, and we can certainly submit that for the board's, uh, attorney's review as a condition of the rule. Uh, I also think we need to probably address something that, uh, Ms. Atty brought up. Um, the, a- and we, you know, we could provide this again, um, to the board as necessary. Uh, these lots are, are owned by different LLCs, but they're all related LLCs. And the same vote, and there's a representative of the owner here tonight, uh, but these lots are all, uh, owned by essentially the same people, the same group. Um, and so there's no, I have been in touch with them, there's no issue with draining this easement, um, they're prepared to sign it. And when, you know, when we have it done, and so that's why we really don't have an issue with, uh, you know, using these other lots as a part of this application. Uh, let's see, what else, uh, fire lane, where's the fire lane? Right there on the left, right?
Yes, yes, designated fire lane.
All right, uh, okay, let's talk about lighting, um, what is, what is the existing, you have a separate plan, right?
Yes.
Okay. You want to do this before we do this?
Yeah, let's talk about the, uh, impervious and, uh, drainage.
Oh, why don't you do that first?
Okay, yeah.
All right, uh, so what is the situation with impervious?
Well, as stated before, it's ninety-nine percent impervious, we're proposing these, uh, planting beds, uh, that'll be, uh, planted with, uh, native vegetation, and, uh, it'll reduce the amount of impervious by approximately three hundred and ten square feet. So, uh, we'll be creating less, uh, impervious surface.
And you are tearing up the, uh, the parking and replacing it, uh, in with, with additional parking, except for that pavement, sorry, except for that three hundred square feet?
Yeah, the, the pavement will be, uh, milled and repaved, and the inlets will be reset as part of that process.
And so the drainage patterns won't change.
Exactly.
Okay, uh, and uh, we, uh, the applicant will agree, uh, with a stipulation that we will guarantee maintenance of the landscape for two years, correct?
Yes.
Um, other than the designated parking signs and directional signs, um, are we proposing any signs for this project? Um, the address number?
Uh, yeah, as stated before, it, it's gonna be nondescript, uh, just directional signs, parking signs, and a building address. Uh, building-mounted address sign, it's not gonna be a Blue Violet sign or anything, you know?
Uh, okay, uh, utilities. Uh, we're, uh, we don't need to go into great depth on, on utilities for, for the board, but, uh, essentially we are gonna provide all the necessary utilities for our building. Uh, the, the one thing that I can think of that we are not doing for Yorcona is, we are not as a part of this application, putting in their utilities, that'll be their responsibility, right?
That's correct, and, and or the property owners.
Okay, um, to address, uh, some, uh, comments from Ms. Atty's report, uh, page sixteen, any commercial vehicles gonna be parked on the site overnight?
No.
So the only commercial vehicles that would be there would be ones that are either doing a pickup or, uh, looking to deliver.
That would be in transit according to Jen's testimony.
Okay, uh, now, uh, there were some, before we get back to we'll do a little later maybe in, in a second, if I'd be right, while we're here, um, there were some existing non-conformities that have been called out, uh, that we have noticed for, but they are existing conformities, non-conformities that are going to remain, right?
That's correct.
So one of them is section twenty-five dash twelve point one of the ordinance that requires a five-foot wide sidewalk between a building and a parking area or drive used by the public. And there is none today, and we're not proposing, right?
That's correct.
And, uh, why is it that we don't need, uh, aside, first of all, we're talking about in the interior side, right, not on the street?
Yes, it's, it's all existing pavement and it's gonna remain pavement, and, you know, the folks will be able to, uh, utilize that for uh, the access of the buildings.
So, for example, if you're parked on the ten spaces on the left side of the driveway, you can just walk across.
Yeah, just like you would in the shopping center.
Right, uh, and requiring dri- there's, the, the ordinance also requires driveways for two-way traffic to have a minimum width of twenty-four feet. And we believe, I think, right, based on our, our analysis, that existing driveway, that two-way, uh, on Ashland has a width of eighteen feet currently, and no change in width is proposed, right?
Yes, this is only for the residential access, so, yeah, we're not proposing any, any width increases on that.
Would be impossible, right?
Yes.
Right, and, but the only people using it are the four, uh, occupants of the residential building and emergency vehicles.
Correct.
Uh, the ordinance also says that we are not allowed to have off-street parking spaces within twenty-five feet of Ashland Avenue. Uh, those spaces exist today, I believe, and we're proposing to move them, right?
That's correct, it's in the deli, yes.
Okay, and there's, we're also not supposed to have a driveway within five feet of a sidewalk line. But that exists and is proposed to remain, where's that?
Right over here.
That's the two-way, right?
Yeah.
Uh, section twenty-five dash twelve point three of the ordinance requires two loading spaces where none exists presently, and we do have one that is proposed, right?
That's correct.
Good.
Right in this area.
And is that, uh, based on the testimony from Ms. Hurdell about the types of vehicles that will be coming in, is there uh, any reason to think that that loading space will interfere with site circulation?
No.
Uh, chapter twenty-five.
Can you point to the loading space again? Yeah, it's not labeled, but you, the architectural plan that shows it.
And not the green above it? That's part of the building.
Yeah, okay, they'll show you the access door and, uh, yeah, here.
Uh, okay, uh, minimum side yard setback of ten feet when adjacent to residences where less than ten exists now and is proposed to remain. And that is the setback between the parking and the back of the apartment building, right?
Yes.
And we're not changing?
No.
Okay, all right, let's go to the other set, the sheet then, and talk about the lighting. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we have one sheet. Yeah, there's another sheet.
There's another lighting point, there's a lighting point.
Yeah, I believe that was a separate file, previous application or?
No.
Separate file?
Well, that's the architect.
Yeah, that's it.
There we go. It's mixed in with the packages.
Okay.
This wasn't revised.
It's what?
It, this is not a revised, this was the first.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, right, uh, okay, so, uh, the, uh, the engineer and planner have called out that there are some locations on here where there is not the one-point-zero-foot Campbell's minimum that is required by the ordinance, right?
That's correct.
And can you show the board where those locations are?
I believe it's hard to read the, uh, isometrics there, but I believe it's in this area.
Uh, referring to the
Yeah.
Right, uh, and
Possibly in this area.
Okay, and so, uh, as a condition of approval, we'll be willing to work with the, the board engineer to make any adjustments that are necessary to provide that complaint.
Yes.
Uh, I have, uh, no other questions for Ms. Moran.
Okay, ma'am, if you have any questions, let's move around, I have something.
Smirn, just one, thank you, um, about using Park Avenue. Coming in, how do you get to Yorcona? Because I just see the blue lines going up, is there a way to get straight over to Yorcona? How, how do they, would they also be using Park Avenue?
Yeah.
Right, everything's.
You see the directional arrows, they'll come in this way.
Right.
And through the gate.
Okay.
And then access it that way.
And then, so what happens? They have to go all the way up and then?
Yeah, that, that, that's.
Right, on the side, this goes straight in?
Yeah, yeah, this is the existing fence that will install a gate, which will be, you know, uh, basically locked and normally a- accessed by, uh, emergency vehicles.
Thank you, that was it, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a few questions, now I'm starting to remember the Yorcona application, so.
I'm not sure I understand.
Oh, I'll explain, let me explain. So, this Z shape to enter, I think my comment was, why don't we take, see how they're double-loaded spaces? Can we take some of those spaces and put them up against the building? And then you have a straight shot in, because I believe it's like one big long curb cut, long Park Avenue. So what, what size, do you know what size vehicles are gonna be coming in and out of here? Are they just vans, or are they gonna be?
Like, small cattle trucks and, and sprinters type?
E- even for the soil and the, the larger stuff that they're bringing in, it's still gonna be just Sprinter vans? Sprinter vans, all right, so then that'd be nice to have a turning template just to, to prove that it works, but that's all. Um, how about the gates? Slide gates, swing gates, how's that gonna work?
Uh,
Maybe the security guy would be better along though.
Okay, all right, so wait for him, swing gates, and then, so, yeah, I guess it might be operational as well, so y- y- the address of the site is Ashland Avenue, correct?
Yes.
How are they gonna know to come in, park? If it's, if it's not your trucks, it's vendors that are gonna be coming with soil and seeds and fertilizer. Right, eventually they'll figure it out, but.
Gonna have to sign it.
Yeah, to, to have the delivery, and if they do come in on Ashland, you're gonna have to open the gate, they're not gonna be able to K-turn and get out of there. So.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, it's not.
I think what you have, we may talk about this, of doing, uh, signs on Ashland that say emergency only.
Okay.
Right, and then.
And to direct them around the corner, okay, all right.
There's a, no, uh, not enter sign here.
Okay, and then the other thing is, give me the width between the ten spaces and the five spaces, what's the width in there? I mean, I see it, yeah, it really pinches down when you get down there. How, how are these cars, these le- these three, gonna back up with a building behind them? What's the width from there to the building?
Labeled, but, um,
It looks like it's maybe eighteen, right? It looks like about.
Eighteen is the two, is the two, uh, access aisles for the residential, so.
I'm not even caring about two-way traffic, I'm just more concerned how you're gonna back out and maneuver in and out of those parking spaces.
Yeah, we'll have to label that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and you'll have.
It's tight. It's at least twenty-four.
Yeah? All right.
Well, these are, these are eighteen, so.
Right, that, I mean, if you go down, it looks like it's about the same, I don't know, I mean, maybe when you get a chance, you'll pull a scale out. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk, do you have any questions?
Um, no, no question.
Hi, Mr. McGurino, do you have any questions?
Not this time, Mr. German.
Mr. Alper, do you have any question?
No, thank you.
Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Uh, okay, yes, looking at this plan, so I I didn't hear the answer on the sizes of the of the delivery trucks, um, when Mr. Klein was just asking. But the, so we're entering on park, and I guess you said what, sprinter?
Sprinter vans, things like that.
Okay, and we've done the turning radius on, uh, emergency vehicle access in this, you know, coming here, like, uh, a ladder truck? No issue.
There was template, like, was done, it's part of the Yorcano application, but we haven't folded it into, certainly we can do that.
Okay, cuz this is, this access point is new since, right?
No, that the, the, you're kind of, when they were coming in the same, they were coming in the same spot, it's just the 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 red lines were there.
Oh, the delineation was different, because you said you're, we're avoiding driving over.
We're trying, we're trying to save those parking spaces, I mean, Mr. Brian raised an interesting issue about whether we move the space. I thought shift would be.
Okay. And so, could you kind of, with with the pointer, demonstrate how the sprinter van, whatever the delivery van, it's coming in, uh, it's pulling up to the loading area and it's backing into the loading area?
Yeah, it'll, uh, come in here, uh, either whatever's more convenient, probably just probably backing in.
Okay, so, the loading area, so you you're saying right above the loading area, that green spot?
Yeah, right here, they'll they'll have the, so, they'll have this, no, no parking area to maneuver also.
Okay, so they maneuver that way, they back into, I'm I'm wondering.
Yeah.
If that is the, you know, on the, um, the right side, if the the vertical side, if that is the actual entrance as opposed to what's above it, right, uh, for loading.
Yeah, the architect will be able to talk to that.
All right, um. The lockbox, um, forgive my ignorance, but so the lockbox could be opened um, ahead of time, if like they knew new emergency vehicles needed to come in off of Ashland, someone could go over there and, you know, open the gate.
I think the se- the security consultant will talk to that, whether it'll be card activated and, you know, the the fire department or police department will have a, a card also, or or, uh, code, or I'm not sure, he'll be able to talk to that.
Okay, terrific, um, just, uh, can we scroll up a little bit? Just a little more, yeah, so the parking under the residential and the deli, so you've got four under the residential and then, you know, go a little to the right, what's preventing? Is that just an empty space right there? At the bottom, the the fourth, yeah.
With the Xs.
Where the Xs.
Yeah.
The the Xs, as I'm kind of mentioned before, could be a potential tandem spot. Wait, say that again, sorry, a tandem spot where, of course, you know, if it's the same tenant and they have two cars, you know, they could work it into the lease or whoever to be able to park, uh.
So there's no issue doing that, is?
Yeah, it it's done.
All right, um.
But that's, that's not configured into our parking category, that's, that's potential, uh, use.
Gotcha. Now, I guess the rest of my, uh, questions would be for the architect.
Actually. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Counselperson Scarp, do you have any questions?
I just had a quick question about that spot with the X, that tandem spot that we, what we're doing with. I mean, if we did find that there were smells that were coming out there, could like pine trees be planted along there? So it would be a buffer between the residential and the deli and it's this establishment?
In this area here?
Yeah, might like clean the air and.
Yeah, we could.
If it becomes a problem, especially.
You could create some additional landscape area, sure.
Yeah, I think that would be, we could use some trees. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions? Ms. Capra, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, I have just a couple, um, thank you for your testimony. Uh, one question about, uh, water usage, um, have you contacted, uh, New Jersey American Water regarding like a a will-serv letter?
Well, right now we're showing, uh, fire access, our f- a fire line coming into the building and a domestic line. So, obviously, uh, either the, uh, property owner or the applicant will have to coordinate with them. Uh, you know, we label as a, uh, new domestic and and new fire supply, so obviously they would have to and and get all the permits required from, uh, the township to access the, through the, uh, through the pavement.
We have not yet gotten most of our.
Okay, but you will, yeah, okay, um, and then, I'm sorry if someone already asked this, but the the access off of, um, Park Avenue, was that, uh, is that greater than eighteen feet? Is that, is that twenty-four feet there?
Yeah, it's not labeled, but, uh, I'm pretty sure it, that's existing parking, I mean, I I have a plan, I could scale it.
Okay.
And let you know.
Uh, yes, that was, uh, you know, one other question, just was wondering if it was wider than that other eighteen, fifteen-foot width, okay, um. And then my other question is about, uh, drainage, I know you said that everything on site, you know, it's per, um, you know, you're decreasing previous coverage slightly, uh, mill and pave and, um, you know, adjusting, yeah, resetting the inlets, um. It it appears that there maybe are some drainage structures in the area that i- i- it appears that on the plan that maybe they're missing or not able to be identified. Uh, have there been existing issues on the site with drainage? And are you planning to do any kind of like cleaning of the existing system? Curiously, it it appears that maybe it'll pond.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any drainage issues there, uh.
I I I think what we could, uh, I mean, he won't know the answer to that, we do have a representative of the of the property owner here.
Okay.
Certainly, I I don't think we'd have any issue with the condition that we, you know, e- evaluate the condition and and clean if we need to.
Okay. Sounds good, all right, that's it.
Let the record show, Mr. Cardoza has left the board. Arica, do you have any questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Right ahead.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Moran, um, let's start with parking first, uh, as our understanding is, so, um, the the way, um, we've calculated the parking spaces required for this entire site would be thirty-seven. And I think the difference is your two-bedroom, uh, parking spaces, I know you're counting them as six, it's actually just three that you need, because it's our size standards is one-point-five spaces per unit rather than bedroom.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's even better.
Yeah, so, having said that, if you can go back to the parking, I think there are ways to improve the parking and circulation that is on the site. I think one of the concerns, again, in the ordinance, especially, you know, where you're gonna put the deli parking spaces, uh, for the deli um, access people, you already have that one parking spot right coming off of Ashland Avenue, which is of concern, as you can see from the ordinance also. Is there a way of removing that? And probably, uh, you know, your last spot which is not drawn out, I'm not sure if that's nine feet, but that can be made nine feet, so we have eight parking spaces over there.
Certainly, we can restripe it, cuz we're proposing to restripe it now, so that's, that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, then, now we're looking at the blue violet side. And I thank Mr. Klein for asking that question, I think it's very important that we know the dimensions of the, uh, driveway, especially because it, where it's labeled compact car parking spaces, the dimensions that outlined is saying nine by eighteen, but I don't. I think.
Yeah, that's like, I, that's probably a mislabel.
Yeah, so if if.
It's eighteen.
If if that's like that, I'm assuming that's about eight, you know, eight by sixteen or something like that.
Typical for, uh, compact, yeah.
And if those ten ones are nine by eighteen, um, you know, there can be a bit of concern as to when cars are backing out, especially because that structure of the building is right there. It might be, we might have to look at eliminating some of the spots there in order to make it a better circulation, yeah.
Maybe what we could do is while the architect is on, he could scale up and can come back on and and we can tell you what they, what they are, something like.
Yeah.
But what I think you're saying is that down here, we, because we've got, you've got two, maybe three to give.
Yeah.
Maybe we lose one of the ones that's right across them over there.
Especially because, you know, board is concerned about how your vehicles are backing out, and we do understand this is existing site, but the circulation can be improved. Um, now, coming back to, I think there's one, um, I'm sorry, Joe, but little north of the site to go, there's one parking spot that's ninety degrees to all these other parking spots that's shown.
Yes.
We are recommending that at least a wheel stop be put over there, because it's ninety degrees going to be right into these parking spaces.
Which one is that?
Right, it's that.
Right here.
I don't see why.
Yeah, it's not on every plan.
Yeah.
It's right here, but is that an extra spot? It looks like it's straight for a space.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it's in the count.
No, it's, I don't know why that.
But that's a good spot for a spot.
Yeah. We assume that is, we assume that is, and that's why, that's how we calculated.
This right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if that's an errant line from drafting or, uh, I I don't, it wasn't, wasn't, that it wasn't proposed for.
It is, because all these others are just measuring to nine. The, all these others are measuring only nine, so I think that is a spot.
Okay.
Okay, how are you describing that spot, so that?
It's perpendicular to Ashland, it's the only one that's perpendicular.
Yeah. So we'll be, we're recommending at least a wheel stop be put over there, so that person is not directly going into these other.
But you gotta be able to make sure they can get in and out of that spot with the fence being there, again, we need a dimension for.
I think far enough.
Far enough away, okay.
Again, I'm just ice.
Right.
Scaling it, I think Mr. Moran will be able to measure it and tell us.
I'm told that the errant space is a space.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay.
So, I I I would recommend, again, I don't want to design over here, but I would ask Mr. Moran to discuss with Mr. Savage, I think circulation will be improved, just because we have a little bit more parking spaces to give.
Yeah. Agreed.
Right. Um, now, for the loading spaces, um, I know the testimony was there's only gonna be sprinter vans that's going to be on the site. Um, I would still, uh, recommend that a circulation diagram be provided, especially because we don't know what's coming for Yorcano, like, I I wasn't there, so I don't know what the testimony was then as to what type of vehicles are gonna come for that, and if there is enough space for that circulation. I know that's not your responsibility, Mr. Savage, but if you're looking at the circulation of the whole site, I think it's important for that. Um, then, um, this this takes care of the, sorry, I'm all over the place, but give me a couple of minutes. Um, the deli spaces will also be marked, right? Like, will be identified that that's for deli parking.
I don't think that's necessary, cuz, yeah, there there's only one access road here.
Okay, but the employees will be told not to park there, because the blue violet people will be coming into the games.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, then the next question is not for you, but for the security people. Um, the impervious coverage, um, just for making the rec- record clear, I know it was said that the, um, the percentage was ninety-nine-point-eight-one, if I'm correct, I mean, that's what we noted from the plan. The reduction from three-hundred-and-ten square feet, does that change the percentage, or if this still remains ninety-nine-point-one?
Well, that's the target.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine-point-five.
Yeah, if if we plant a couple of trees here, I suggested that'll obviously.
Drop it down even.
Yeah.
Um, I would say, just because, again, the record has to be clear, even though it's a change in impervious coverage, and Sultan, you would agree with that, uh, granted, it's reducing from ninety-nine-point-five to whatever we get the calculation, it would still be a variance, because it's not meeting the seventy-five percent, that the, you know, the firm. The the building coverage is calculating all the buildings on the side, right? So once.
Yes, there's no, no increase in building coverage.
Um, could we talk a little bit about the fencing on the side? Is all fencing going to be six feet high?
Uh, there's a detail over here. Down here. There are dimension on that. Double swing gates.
By nine inches.
Yeah, that's the gate, so, yeah, six feet or, well, actually, up here, it's shown graphically, it doesn't look like it, but it's saying eight foot, change in sense.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend, because again, the ordinance only comes with six foot, I think, in non-residential.
Revised that.
For side and.
Yeah, that, yeah.
We would recommend it become six. Um, and, um, the, is there fencing along the Ashland Avenue?
Yes, there's existing.
And that is to remain as is.
Yeah, that'll be, except for installing a new gate.
No, the one right by the deli, I believe there is.
Continuous over there, should think of, so, uh, it will be, it's, it's only a gate, it it's the condition will be evaluated, maybe possibly replaced.
I I think I was talking about the ones, uh, you know, where the nine parking spaces would be, I think there is another fencing, and so are not on the side. No? I thought I saw it. At the road, right by.
Right there, yeah.
Okay, you guys are going.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a fact. Yeah, so it's.
The label, I don't see it.
Maybe I'll.
But, so, uh, we're we're gonna, we're gonna retain those.
We're being too shrouded in the ones.
Yeah, yes.
So, lighting, um, I believe the testimony was that you're gonna work with us to provide the lighting in spaces, so is that variance getting eliminated?
I think we should ask for the variance, because I, cuz I don't know whether ultimately we're all gonna you know, be able to comply with everything, so I think it would be better to ask for the variance. I'll defer to Diana on this, but, but, um, and right now, it, I think even in your report, it says, uh, it doesn't try to measure everybody, it just says it isn't in compliance. Right, so I think if we ask for a variance or, uh, the fact that it doesn't, isn't completely in compliance, then you know, we don't have to come back, because we can't agree on what the scope of the lighting is.
Do, do we know the sections that the lighting isn't compliant?
Yes, it is in my, uh, memo, um.
Because I think that would that would be important for the board to have pointed out.
Is that far away?
Right, because, because then if it's in a section where they feel security-wise, it might be necessary, you're not gonna get a variance, um, but if it's in an area.
Of course, the whole balancing here is too much light as opposed to not enough light for.
But I think the board needs to see where it's deficient.
Yeah, right.
So I think I I promise, um, Diana's concern that, you know, revised plans that board also is familiar to see with as to where, you know, all this is going to.
So you don't have that already listed on plans, this would have to be submitted?
Yes, I can work with our.
Okay.
With Mr. Savage and my office.
Well, I I think it's fair to say that one area where there's a deficiency that was pointed out by Mr. Moran was, uh, to the Ashland Avenue side, uh, of the, um, of the Blue Violet Building. Um, and then I'm, and then there's a general issue, I guess, about what lighting we wanna put in uh, in the parking, uh, in in the eastbound area on thirty-two and thirty-four, I mean, we're not gonna put light stations in the middle of a parking lot, I don't think, but, um.
They're not coming, they're coming between eight and four, even in the winter, they're gonna be in daylight, so.
Right, so.
Um, the next question, um, that I have one last one for. So, loading spaces, um, you did tell us, if you can provide the dimensions of that, would that meet one loading space? Where the loading spaces are wide for this entire site?
Yeah.
So you still are seeking variance for the two spaces that you want to be providing? Or?
I I I guess, I guess, I guess we are, it's not, it's not a loading space for us, but I guess we are.
Wait, I'm sorry, what, I missed that?
They they buy ordinance this.
They're required to have two loading spaces.
Three spaces.
Oh, three spaces, okay, so you need a variance for two.
Yeah.
One for the deli, one for the Yorcano, and one for them?
No, I believe the total comes to three because of the size of the buildings. Um, you know, the the cultivation as well as the blue violet building. Uh, you know, the, the cultivation as well as the Blue Violet building and the Yerkana building, that's why it comes. I believe, I think that is, I have chairman for now, if I present something, I might ask again.
Mrs. Savage, do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, comments, maybe questions, but the, I think a lot of that, I, um, or pretty much all that I agree with. Uh, definitely the truck circulation, I think that's gonna be important, certainly in that. In that easement area with that tight turn you have there. And the aisle widths, having the plan show those drive aisle widths in more locations. Um, it's hard to tell, but it definitely looks like the throat's down there.
Yeah, we're gonna be re- reconfiguring the parking, so make sure.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, uh, that was a good suggestion to potentially lose a couple of spaces because you don't need them, um. Make it a little better, um. The, uh, stormwater, I know you talked about being slight reduction, I don't know if you wanted sort of. Have a brief discussion of why you don't need to do any stormwater, proposed stormwater, just to kind of cover that, but, um.
I believe that there was a, a previous letter issued about that everything was acceptable as far as maintaining on the existing.
I was just saying for the benefit of the.
Do you have that?
I, I know what he's asking is can you tell the board why we shouldn't have to do a drainage stuff?
Because we're reducing the amount of impervious, maintaining the existing drainage pa- patterns. And, uh, we'll be doing some, uh, inspection work, uh, on the existing existent. Facilities to make sure they're functional.
Yep. Um, and then just one, I guess, comment regarding the lighting also, I think the parking spaces to the east of the deli. Uh, they get very low up there as well. Uh, on, on the lighting plan, but, um. I think certainly as you're approaching Ashland, they're, they're pretty low up there. Okay, so just another area to, to look at when you're looking at the revising the lighting.
We may, we may even have related ownership of the building next story. We might be even be able to mount on the walls of that building, I have to look at that.
We'll look into that.
Okay. I think that's it now, I mean, there, there is, um, some comments that I'm sure will come up with all the other testimony from the, uh, other, uh, witnesses.
Okay, um. So any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Moran on his testimony? Any members of the public have any questions on his testimony, please come up and be identified. One thing, um, I'm, so again, you're taking over the, uh, conditions of your can, are you resurfacing the entire parking lot? We're grading it and restriping it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Seeing that, we're done?
Thank you.
Thank you, we're gonna take a five minute break.
Are you done? Are we talking about security?
Such a red. My question. Finished Sam. Okay, well, do what you need to do right now with this thing. I don't know what that means, I'm scared to hear.
Um, their architect is not available, January meeting.
No, they're paying for the.
He's talking about January, but at January meeting, their architect is not available. I said if you can make it like fifteen minutes, you can get that done.
Yeah.
Yeah, my whole place, so. And now they're saying we aren't. I guess they can't make it by January, so there's these things that have to be saved. Nothing takes fifteen minutes, just.
I know, I know. Oh, I got it, that's what he's going, okay.
Do the voice.
Mr. Chairman, I have a little problem, I lost control on this.
Okay.
I'm gonna try and resolve that.
Okay. No more mice. Okay, back on the record. Mrs. Sullivan.
I'll come.
Okay.
Are we ready to go?
Yeah, yeah, um, yes, we're ready to go.
Uh, raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
Raise your right hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Please put your full name on the record, uh, and spell your last name.
Gianfranco Savido, last name S A R R I D O. First name? Gianfranco, G I A N F R A N C O.
Mr. Sarita, by whom are you employed?
I'm the Architect of Freckord.
And what's the name of your firm?
Berza Architects.
Berza, B E R S A?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and, um, can you provide the board with your professional credentials, please?
Correct, um, licensed in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania and West Virginia. I have been in, you know, few other meetings in different townships. Uh, we have had business for about, uh, since twenty sixteen.
And is your, is your New Jersey architectural license current?
Yes.
Where'd you go to school, sir? Do you have a bachelor's, master's?
Yes, I have a bachelor of degree in architecture and also construction management.
From what university?
Ten J A T.
Thank you, excellent, unless anybody has any questions, we accept you as an architect licensed state of New Jersey, go right ahead, sir. So, uh, uh, Mr. Sarita, you prepared the plans that were submitted to the board from architectural perspective, right?
Yes.
Well, right ahead, yeah.
Yeah, just waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joe, are we gonna get this or no? Not gonna happen, what else can we do?
Okay.
We'll refer to anything that we have. You, you have, you have, uh, plans?
Do you want to?
We have, we have.
Okay.
An easel.
An easel, wow.
Thank you, Marin.
We turn that on the side so the public can also see, like, right behind you, would that be possible? A little further, a little further back so everybody, we can see if they can see. Yeah, outstanding, okay.
Now.
And can you just identify the document, sir?
Yes. We have multiple questions about the, uh, fence that we're putting up around.
Let's, let's, let's start with which, what plan are you referring to?
So this is, uh, A two, A two point zero, that's the proposed exterior building elevations.
The data plan?
There's eleven twenty-one. That's the revision date.
Twenty-five, two thousand.
Yes, alright, so this was part of the, of the plans that we submitted, uh, on November twenty-first, two four, right?
Correct, yes, so it is a greatest.
Can you explain to the board that we're not doing a lot of exterior renovations as part of this project, can you explain that there are?
Yes, the building is existing, it has a brick facade, we are repointing the existing order. Uh, we are trying to match the, uh, over the canopy where we put the fence. We're trying to match the finish with the existing building, but we are closing all the windows on the side. Because it's a manufacturing facility, they don't need these windows, they're in very bad shape, not being replaced. Uh, the windows on the front of the building facing Ashland, they will remain, but they will be filmed. So you won't be able to see through, that's the, uh.
Yeah. Uh, this building will be fully screened, by the way, right?
Correct, yes, fully screened.
Now, on the, on the outside, uh, uh, we are adding an exterior staircase. And that staircase is used for access to get to the, uh, HVAC equipment, I believe. It's on top of the, uh, canopy, is that right?
Correct.
And there were some questions about that and the screening around that equipment, so can you explain, uh. What's the staircase being used for, who will have access to the canopy and how we will screen that equipment?
Yes, so the purpose of that staircase is just mainly for maintenance use of the HVAC equipment over the canopy. Uh, and you will have access with security, not anybody can get into the, uh, portion of the building. It will be fully closed the whole time. And, yes, we have three different materials on the fence, bottom one is three feet. Three feet high and that will match the brick facade finish. And the fence, which is eighty time, which is, uh, just a translucent, so you can see through its wire mesh. And the other piece of the stock of finish, which is also about three feet high. We don't eliminate the fence in it, that's not, uh, the lighting for the community. The, the whole purpose of that fencing is just to screen the network that is gonna go to different floors. Uh, that's mainly the purpose, there is no other structural support.
So where the board ordinarily would see an application with, uh, HVC, HVC equipment on a roof. And there's some screening around it, in this case, the, the equipment's actually going on a canopy at a lower level, right?
Correct.
And, and what we were trying to do was to reduce the visual impact of that equipment, even though it's in the interior of the lot. And nobody can really see it unless they're in the interior of the lot, right?
Exactly.
Hey, but then Zapte had a question about the, the size of that, uh, of that screening area. And we can work with her and then resolve tha- that issue to her satisfaction. Is that right?
Correct, thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, there was some barbed wire on a fence somewhere, but we're removing that.
Yes, we are eliminating that, that was in the three, three rendering, uh. Uh, was on, yep, eight, three point zero. Revision on the drawing is the same date, eleven twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. Yeah, so we eliminated all the barbed wire over the rest.
Alright.
Six feet.
And there, we, we are adding a transform, or no, there is an existing transformer and we're adding a generator, right?
Yes, uh, the next step is transformer, yes, we are adding the generator, it will be fully closed. I know one of the comments was about the metal fencing, we're providing a sound barrier inside the fence.
So, uh, if we were to switch that, uh, enclosure fencing from metal to board on board, that would be okay, right?
That should be fine, yes.
Okay, and, uh, like any other, uh, generator like this, we're sure the board's heard this before. Uh, these are for emergency purposes, right?
Correct.
And it's state regulations require, uh, us to do periodic testing to make sure that that generator is actually working, right?
Correct.
Right, and so, uh, during those limited periods of time every month when you have to do, test the generator. Then we have to comply with the state noise regulations for that noise, right?
Yes.
But, but again, this transformer and generator are located in the interior of the sites. But but again, this transformer and generator are located in the interior of the site, some considerable distance from the residence, right?
Yes, yes, it's all the way at the entrance of the building.
Yeah. Let's see. The doors will be pressure controlled, correct?
They're, yes, they are sealed, so no odor can escape the building. The mechanical system that we use, we have one from Camfield, Canada. It's a MRF fifteen, so it filters the air inside the flower rooms. And then we have the one on the exterior, which also filters all the air in the odor, so you don't have any.
So you're describing the odor mitigation that's going to be installed in addition to the fact that the doors will be pressure controlled?
Yes, yes.
And the, just because there were some questions about it, the the odor mitigation system that you're describing, can you just provide a little bit more information to the board about that?
Yes.
And whether it's been sanctioned by the appropriate regulatory authorities, etc.?
Yes, it has a MRF fifteen filtration system with the carbon filtration as well. And again, it's from Camfield. We have all Greenleaf, also in the USA, that provides a kind of filtration system for every single flower room and the building.
So it's utilized by Greenleaf, among, which is one of the big national cannabis companies, correct? Okay. Oh, there was, Ms. Zapte had a question about, there's a door on the north side, and do we really need that door because there's some access issue?
Yes, that that door is mainly for means of egress. It's on the second floor. This is eight point one, one point one, proposed fixture plan, second floor. Same date on the drawing, eleven twenty one, twenty twenty five. That's just the exit case of emergency, one of the means of egress of the building.
Was it still gonna be useful? Can we still use it, or is it gonna be?
Yes, it can be still used. They want to go out that way, but it's mainly for emergency exit.
Okay. And ADA compliance.
Correct.
There was some testimony from the engineer that we we have a an acceptable path from the ADA space into the existing building?
Yes, so this drawing is eight one point zero. And this is the proposed fixture plan, first floor. The entry is near by the generator room and the stairs aside of the building. That entrance is at floor level. There is no
It's an existing grade, so we don't need a room.
Exactly, yes.
The loading space.
Correct.
We we heard testimony about the loading space. What, there was some question, and I wanted to deal with this anyway. Where's the where's the loading area? Was it then the blue square that we were talking about before?
Right.
That's part of the build, right?
That's part of the build. That that will be enclosed. Right now, there is just a canopy above it, but it will be enclosed, become part of the building. Alright, so we have a delivery room will be locked the whole time, only accessible by security and the people who enter the building. But the roll-up gate is just for the sprinter band in front of it is very
That answered the question before about that, when you park the delivery vehicle in that spot, there's a door right there for you to go in, right?
Yes, yes, indeed. That was off.
Okay. And the the other blue square that's there that you just said is not enclosed yet, but will be, we'll hear from the security expert that that's where we're gonna be storing waste when it goes out and 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 some product when it comes in and that's eventually.
Correct, yes, yes.
I don't have any more questions for Mr. Sarita.
Okay. Mr. McCrane, do you have any questions for Mr. Sarita?
I do not, Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
No. Mr. Wilson?
No questions.
Vice Chairman Durino?
No questions, sir.
Mr. Alper?
None for me, thank you.
Okay. Councilperson Scarpah?
One quick one. I was just curious, why was eight feet fence originally proposed? Was that for security reasons?
It was produced, yes, it was originally eight feet. We got it down to six feet to match what we have existed on site.
So you'd feel like six feet is okay from a security perspective?
Yes, they have electrified gates, so nobody can enter the space unless it's activated by security.
Alright. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions? Ms. Capford, do you have any questions? Marika, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the testimony. To go back from the beginning, the canopy where the HVAC units are going to be stored, how tall are those units?
About fifty inches, roughly. They all go that high.
Okay.
Six feet, probably, the highest.
Okay, sixty. So the question is, why are we, why is a fourteen foot enclosure proposed around there?
Yes, we we just thought it was for aesthetic purposes to match the building exterior. It's gonna be next to the show houses in the back. So it's something more aesthetically pleasing that they can see once you see out the window. We can remove it. If you remove it, then you're gonna see all the HVAC.
We're not saying to remove it, but if it's only six feet, the the mechanical structure is going to be, maybe we can need halfway understanding of because you're gonna have a fourteen foot, you know, brick chain link and stuck with. It's just going to stand out even more than what it's intending to do, which is, you know, probably blend into the building.
Yes, the purpose was for, so every single unit will have that work going into the floors.
Okay.
So it won't be every single unit, but you will see some that were going about fourteen foot high. And that's that's why we increased the height of the whole fence. If we lower it, you're gonna see a top worker particle that work going into the building.
Okay, I would just request you, if you are looking at it, to revise it. Maybe you can work with our office in preparing some that is palatable to the board and looks, because I think one important thing is that it's very good that this building is getting used. It has seen neglect over the years, and that I think the intention of the board would be to, you know, it's great if you guys are repointing it and doing everything, so might as well just make it into a structure that is, you know, with the new business and everything coming in. So that would be something we look forward. The the question, we don't have to get into the detail. So the way I we understand is the manufacturing is going to be on the first floor, and the cultivation is going to be above?
Yes, so this is the first floor. If we have some dry rooms, processing rooms, mainly on the floors above, we have the flower room. So that's eight point, one point one, second floor. That's the flower rooms to be relocated.
Okay, because I'm getting back to the testimony that was given that you are covering up all the windows because they are not in a condition to be salvaged. Is that is that going to give you enough room for putting your filtration system, or would you need that for, you know?
No, it should be fine, yes. We have enough height.
So just covering all the windows is what being proposed? And will that be covered with just concrete, or will it match the rest of them?
Yes, the intent for right now, the building on on this side of the south of this plant, they have a stock of finish. So we are planning much the same as that whole opening.
Okay, so it it will be complimentary. You're the architect, so just making complimentary for the rest.
Correct.
Where would the cannabis waste be stored to the building, the cannabis waste? Because I think one of the concern is that it shouldn't be outside, especially when it's being collected. Where would that be stored within the building?
Will be stored in the delivery room. It's on the, oh, this is eight point, one point zero, first floor. So it's right next to the loading dock. So it has to be discarded first inside the delivery room, put inside beans, and then a separate contractor comes and picks them up. So two different companies working in conjunction for the waste.
Okay, and the access is only for the employees and cannabis waste handler, and there would be some kind of separation between manufactured products and the cannabis waste, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Maybe some details for the board can be provided on that. Where would all the, I I know Ms. Jen did, is going to provide us the with the list of all the chemicals that are going to be stored on the site. We we would recommend that that be shown also, where on the floor plan that would be stored, because that would be very advantageous for our fire department and police department to know where the materials are stored.
Okay.
Oh, because the the front of the building is, the parking is only going to be used by the deli customers and patrons.
Yes.
The front building is going to be locked and not used by the employees.
Correct, yes, for emergency exit only. We have a stair on the front of the building that goes out down there. Yes.
I think Ms. Jen, that's enough.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, do you have any questions?
Is this one that I'm not sure it'd be for you, or maybe it's operations, but concerning the cultivation and the water from that, the water that's used in the cultivation, how that is handled and discharged? Any chemicals that are in fertilizer, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we we need to get into the details once we get the approval. Yes, it's reverse osmosis that we use to treat the water. Reverse osmosis.
Okay.
But the water gets clean before we get to use it on the plants. Right, we have to calculate, similar to a pool. You have a new house, you have to calculate the pH value or the alkalinity. So it's similar to the water that we get from the city. We have to analyze it before it reaches the plants.
You know, I'm also talking about the discharge. That there's fertilizer in it or whatever in it. How is that treated, and where is discharged to?
Yes, I'll depart that question, I think, to the owner.
Okay, that's it. Do you want, do you want the answer on the treatment?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Jen, do you have the answer to that?
No, no, not, no, no, no. Next time, next time, next time. Thank you. Okay. Do any members of the, I'm sorry, Mr. Savage, you done? Marika? I I, Mr. Savage, you done?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Sarita on his testimony? Please come up and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Sarita on his testimony? Please come up and be identified. Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay.
Can't finish this.
Can't finish this.
No, too much to be shown. Okay, at this time, this meeting, this meeting, this application, PB twenty five dash oh four Blue Violet Grow Incorporated, block sixty two, lot twenty two dot oh one zero one seventy six Ashland Avenue, will be carried to the Planning Board meeting on Wednesday, January seventh, twenty twenty six at seven thirty PM via Zoom. No additional notice will be required.
Yeah, you went, you went too far ahead.
Oh.
Twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty six.
And I I we, are all the planning board members that are sitting here tonight gonna be on the planning board on January seventh?
Hopefully.
Okay, I just wanted
That's a good point, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't have to worry about certifications and transcript.
As far as we know.
Okay, good, right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute break. And I thank I thank the other applicant also.
Brian Joyce. I was thinking the same thing. Remember everyone, I cannot increase my headphones all the time.
Put your headphones down.
I was gonna say, you don't wanna go to sleep too much in your bed with your eyes. Okay, oh, just one must have stopped. How many days a week do you travel in trip? You're not, not your choice. They tell you. Your appointment. She may have a better friend. How many years you already said? How many years?
If you're gonna ask me, we work that.
How many governors have you been to? Oh, Murphy, okay, okay. So you kept yourself with your demo. That's the question.
That's the question. So he's getting the best.
All right, see you in January.
You remember?
You know, it was a stone wall.
We had a terrible crash. Backing down the hill, lost the place. Scraped against a more rough. So right after the guy, he scraped, broke him, hit the guy down. My son comes, isn't parked in front of my house. Full, he hit my son's car full. I've never seen a thing come off of a car and land on another car. Wax of bean, chips of bean, popped off this guy's hood and landed on his son's car. Yeah, it was insane. He said he lost his place, I hope that he. So, yeah, that's the fact of Sam's heart. So it was parked up here in front of my house. Hit the car, I got better shot, and moved it down the street again. So. Yeah, so, okay, so he hit the guide rails up here, hit the guide rail, then went nice and straight, and then my son's car was up here. Pushed it about fifty feet, turned it, and that's him down there. He hit the utility pole, but he hit it slowly. I caught the end of it on my ring camera, I could see that, he just rolled into it. All their bags went off, he was like disoriented. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. So now we're dealing with having fun. No, his is a Subaru. The other guy was like a twenty-twelve Nissan Altima. Oh, so wait, even better. So my neighbor is standing behind the guide rail, doing, doing, basically, he heard this speech, he turned around, thank God the guy broke, but he jumped out of the way, but the guy. And then Tuesday, a lady came down the hill in the rain, and she ended up under the guy. What's the only one over there? This one? The only thing that was saved was your, maybe walk a little. Oh, oh, where is he? Oh, that, that guy was listening.
Like I usually try to look.
So then, but they're not obviously. And they show them? Okay, alright.
Oh, Sam can sit, yeah, Sam can sit on.
Uh, no, sorry. I wrote down the number. Then it's extension. We have to do anything down there? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Oh, so maybe they should try that.
Clemmer, where do you want to sit? Why don't you sit there? Or do you want to sit? Your choice, or do you want to? Okay, that works.
What's reasonable? Right.
Well, ready? Go.
You're, you're off.
We're on the air, okay? Okay, Bob. Back on the record, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Mr. Kleinberg, you're still under oath, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the cross by Mr. Afrin, did you have? Hey, this is like reading cats tonight. And we didn't get to public questions.
We arranged the furniture.
And everything else could have had a.
Yeah.
You remember that?
Mr. Chairman, I just like to remind all coordinators that the microphones are locked.
They're all locked.
They're all locked, whatever conversations you're having. Um, it might be for that individual microphone, but not in the system.
Mr. Afrin, my notes show that you were in the middle of cross-examination of Mr. Kleinberg?
That is correct.
Okay. And then I know Mr. Kleinberg is opposed to report back as whether you got the additional information that you were, but that you were seeking from Langen.
I did.
Okay, terrific. And I guess his background was.
Yes, I mean, I don't know if Mr. Kleinberg wants to address that information as part of his direct testimony now that he has it.
You want to fill us in as to what you got and what, you know, what the requested information was and what, what was given to you?
I got. Yes. And, and as, within our report, there were two outstanding issues or additional information that we had requested. One, we, we, we had recommended that, that, that the case of slope stability involving a he- heavy microburst, I have rainfall situ- situations such as we had a couple of months ago. Uh, that should be included in the evaluation of slope stability and that, that we would recommend that they uh, include an elevated water, uh, water surface elevation in their stability analysis. It's my understanding that Langen had uh, included a case within elevated water level in their original submitter, but they didn't include the output drawings showing that summary of the calculations that we, and we asked them to send them to us. They sent them to us about a week ago. I got back from vacation on Monday and took, and took a look at, at the information and we, we noted that the water level, uh, that, that we, we felt uh, that the water level they assume wasn't high enough and that we, we recommend that they consider a water level at, at the surface would seek to be parallel to the slope. This is an extreme condition, it's not certain that this could ever occur, and I believe it's Langen's position that the, the condition cannot occur. But it's a worst-case scenario and, and approaching it is if, it's a what-if, uh, uh, question. There's a rather simple calculation that can be done to, to determine what the slope stability for a shallow slope failure under a, um, condition where the groundwater is flowing, the groundwater level is at the top of the slope and that the seepage is parallel to the slope, and so there are, there are hydro, uh, additional hydraulic pressures which lead to a reduced stability. Under using this, we, we gave them an example of some, some simplistic calculations that showed that, that if a condition could develop and would develop, uh, that kind of flow, uh, that the stability would, would become marginal for a, for a shallow and localized, uh, s- slope fence. Uh, that's assuming the soil properties that were assumed for the, uh, by the, by both engineering firms, the posers engineer and the applicants engineer. That assumes that there is no cohesion in the soil, the kind of sticky property, property that would be in certain types of soil that's compared to a plain sand. All the analysis done today have been done for, uh, plain sand, sand materials overlying the bedrock. Um, an additional type of cohesion and Langen, like in discussion of the back and forth discussion on what we were recommending, uh, uh, Langen had indicated and they, and, and we agree that there are, uh, procedures for taking credit for the root action of the vegetation on the slope and that it, and that it, uh, it can be shown through a bias, we have an amount of additional resistance equivalent to a soil cohesion. And so, uh, we recommended to, to, uh, the referee, it was Mark Seal, he's like Langen's engineer who worked on, worked on their stability study, uh, that they do the engineering analysis showing what the additional credit that could be taken for the vegetation and some, and make, and make the formal submitted. They to, to confirm that. Uh, in addition, the other outstanding item that we had was that, uh, we noted that the, uh, stormwater ma- the best management practice of stormwater management systems will be inducing, uh, uh, groundwater infiltration at, at near, uh, at, at the building, uh, on the, on the west side of the building, which is further away from the ridge line. But that we just, we, we recommended that, that the applicants engineers confirm that the, that the stormwater infiltration would not introduce uh, or, uh, under, un- under severe rainfall systems, situations rather, uh, that that would not, uh, induce any, a- a- any flow towards, towards the slope that would, that would impact the stability. And so we left them with those two, um, recommendation in a, in a conversation yesterday on the phone.
Is there any writing that reflects that discussion?
Um, I have, um, my, uh, uh, comments on emails, I can, I can leave that on the board.
Well, I'm a little concerned because the idea was that you're producing a report outlining what needs to be done, and now we're told that you made requests in a phone call that none of us were privy to. So we need to have some written record to show what was discussed and what was agreed, if that exists. I, I need to know that, I can't cross-examine without seeing that material. Do we have that here?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's, perhaps there'll be a break and you can take that out later, I just want to know if it exists, okay?
It exists.
Okay, we're talking, take it now? Should I look at now, it's?
Sure.
Okay, um. Yeah, I'd like to see, because I haven't, I wasn't part of it. Okay, I think what we need to do is to make a copy and mark it for identification, so. Copy machine close by? Can you?
Why don't you just start with two copies? Four copies, four copies.
If, then it'll be marked, but let's, I think.
Yes, point, you mark the original.
Yeah, well, you.
You can write the number on it and then mark it.
This is, other than what you've given us, are there any other writing that referenced those discussions?
No.
You also mentioned there was a discussion. Uh, with Mark Seal, dealing with the engineering analysis for the additional credit for the vegetation. Is that discussion referenced in that email?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. I interrupted you. I don't know if you had more to go on.
No, that that goes with the two outstanding issues we had referenced in our original report and and that is the summary. What I said was the summary of where the review stood. And the information that Langen had submitted.
So from your perspective, then. What specific things are you still waiting to get?
Uh, they, uh, an engineering confirmation that under the extreme condition and utilizing. Uh, the benefits of the vegetation, uh, with providing that adequate stability. Uh, for what would be an extreme and maybe a situation that. That could not actually develop.
Is this reference, is this issue referenced in your original report?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have another page where this reference?
I can check. I'm hey, nineteen, I'm sorry, page nineteen twenty one, I don't need. And it's item number seven on page. Nineteen, uh, the applicant's engine insured in our opinion, review the mounting influence of the proposed. Infiltration basins numbers ten and eleven and consider mitigation by either providing a cutoff. Possibly using the building foundation walls preventing infiltration flowing in the east. Or relocation of the basins further. Down the slo- down, uh, down the back slope.
Now, thank you. Now, perhaps I misunderstood. How does the question of vegetation play into that?
It doesn't play into, it's a separate issue.
Okay, so that the that is the second question. Now, the issue of vegetation and the engineering analysis in terms of the additional credit, does that appear anywhere in the original report?
Yes, uh, a on the same page, item recommended requirements be considered by the board. Uh, item two, long term measures should be required to maintain the health of the forestry on the slope. The health of the root systems provides reinforcement to the shallow topsoil layer on the slope.
So that's what you, so when you say additional credit, what do you mean by the term additional credit?
If the the root system provides a a measure pencil resistance within the soil that that would. Uh, would improve the stability of this of the soil.
So you didn't mean an actual mathematical credit, but just an additional benefit to the structure. Is that correct?
I I think, uh, there there are mathematical methods to will try the beneficial effect of the root system.
Okay, you don't reference those in your report, but you're asking the engineers to come up with an analysis.
Correct.
Is it fair to say you don't have either of those two elements yet?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else based on what you've said tonight that you're still waiting for from the applicant's engineers?
Uh, I'm wait, waiting, uh, uh, waiting for them to. Uh, provide a name, uh, the the engineering calculation for that particular particular mode of. Uh, slope stability.
Dealing with the issue of vegetation.
Right. And I and I believe that 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 can be done.
Alright, so this, calling it oh thirty six, that's a objection. Exhibit, but we're marking it as oh thirty six. This is in the email from Mister Kleinberg. To Mark Seal dated December two, twenty twenty five. And that's the top email. Which is a reply to a an email earlier that day on the twenty sixth, on the second from Mister Seal to Mister.
So what number did we give that? I missed that.
Oh, thirty six.
I'd like to take you back through your report. If you. I'm making reference to a reference at page five. And you make a statement that. Structural drawing is indicating the building floor details and construction type were not available. To check likely, to check the likely distributed dead loading.
I did.
Now. Are those drawings available at this point? Do you know?
No.
Now, could you explain the significance, if any, of this point that you included in page five?
The, uh, the significance of it is the magnitude of the uniformly distributed load that was assumed for the stability calculated. However, the differences are not likely to to make a big difference in the stability analysis based on our experience.
What was, what does the phrase dead load refer to?
Dead load is the weight of all the structural elements in the building. In other words, the weight of the walls, the ceilings, the floors. And all of the structural element.
Now. What does it mean when you say the evaluation did not include? An evaluation of the benefits of weight credit achieved by removal of the existing soils in the basement?
Well, when you take the bearing load of the building, if you're removing, let's let's say soil weighs a hundred and twenty pounds of square foot. A cubic foot. If you remove ten feet of soil, let's say for the basement, in this case, it's up to twenty feet of soil, that means that weight is being taken off of the bearing surface. You eliminated that weight, so you can. You can reduce the effective new load on the on the foundations due to removal of the the soils that are placed. It's called weight credit.
Now, how do we know there'll be a real benefit if there's no evaluation of?
Uh, it's it's obvious that it's a benefit.
But do you know what extent the benefit will rise?
Yeah, I told you, if I take out ten feet, I get twelve hundred pound spreader, which exceeds the load that he exceed, that he's crediting to the building.
Okay, so even though you don't have the this, the drawings about the dead weight bear, the distributed dead loading.
I said, I said that the there is a benefit they could apply to it, and that would likely. Keep the influence in the building in the neighborhood that they're assumed.
But how do we know what the effect of that weight credit would be if we don't have the drawings as to the distributed dead load?
You multiply one hundred and twenty pounds a cubic foot times ten feet, and you get twelve hundred pounds per square feet.
No, I understand that, but if you don't know what the dead load is, how to apply the credit?
Well, I it's whatever the 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 final load that the foundation sees is the dead load minus the twelve hundred pounds a square. Which is less than the weight of the building that they're potential.
Where, where does your figure show the weight of the building?
They say they assume that the building would impose a load of one thousand pounds per square foot at the foundation level. That's in their report.
And what percent differential would one expect potentially if we had drawings as to the distributed dead loading?
The differential, it would be a a standard. Uh, that's a, that's a standard foundation design. Um, it has no effect on the stability of the slope, which I think is the issue.
Okay, thank you. Have you been able to identify the actual high point of the ridge on any of the record?
Yes.
Okay, where does that appear in the record?
Uh, the the high point on. Maybe it's near Langen, or I think it's definitely report near Langen boarding. It's right at the, uh, there's a test bit four on on the plan. It's in in that, it's Langen boarding, it says in our report, Langen boarding, L V grid.
Well, the the building is eight hundred feet long, and so it's going to run along the ridge eight hundred feet, so we can't just be.
Well, you're guessing for the high point. The high point is here. That's the highest.
I I apologize. Have you identified the ridge line itself?
Yeah, uh, the ridge line did, uh, identified, uh, on the on the drawing as a. Um, a line that roughly runs through it. And then, uh, right about here like this.
Can you identify what page you're looking at? Oh, thank you. And what drawing?
There's a very faint line about a quarter of an inch to a half inch from the, uh, from the line of the building. Sort of, and that follows the 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 high point of the ridge.
Is that the hyphenated line or is that the line with the, um, graph line moving up? Up and down?
Should I come over and point it out?
We have the description of the document. Is this.
The document, yeah. The document is Langen Engineering. Um, it's a document that. Is described as. Investigation plan and it bears a date of six eighteen twenty twenty five, drawn by R L B, checked by A Y. Is a one page engineering drawing.
Okay, thank you.
That was in the report.
So let me walk, I'll say. So let me just walk over to you. I see two lines, and one is a dotted line. Somewhere faint. And I see a a line that has a graph bar kind of moving up and down.
It's the dotted line somewhere saying. That it's the where you see these contours here, it's following the depth. That's the the ridge line.
Okay, could I describe it for the record then as a dotted line, and that is to the right of a more solid line that has a graph? Line going up and down to it.
I think the the solid line you're referring to, I think, is the limits of.
Yes.
Limits of these.
Well, there's a line that says limits of grading, and then the dotted line you're referring to is just to the right of them.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a topo elevation number associated with the ridge line?
It does, they they add topo contours and and what happens is right where there's the ridges. Where the line is going perpendicular, wherever it is, they fix the encircled.
So in other words, this is superimposed on the contour lines?
Yeah.
And what's the number? What's the elevation?
Oh, the the high elevation is. The the elevation varies along the ridge. Uh, I'm just going to get right here. It's six sixteen, I think, is roughly. The high point. And it and if you go to the north into the building, it drops to. About six hundred and nine existing.
So my question was actually, I misspoke earlier when I spoke to the high point of the ridge. I simply wanted to know, we have the identifying line of the ridge itself. So that would be the dotted line you just referred to.
Right.
Thank you.
Can I just confirm the line that Mister?
Yeah, because it follows the ridge line all the way up and goes up in the.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, I'd like to, I'm sorry. I'd like since, um, since Mister Kleinberg just put in my pen. A trace on much of that line, I'd like to just mark that as an exhibit if we could.
That would be oh thirty seven, I think we're up to.
Great, and I would just like to state for the record that it appears to be the line with which the applicant must stay west of according to the ordinance.
Yeah, my reason for doing this is we didn't really have a definitive representation in early assessment, so I wanted to have that stuff.
At the end of tonight, we're going to take that from you, and we're going to give it to our board secretary, and we'll have it copied and put on the.
We just mark it.
Right now, yes, oh thirty seven. So this is the Langen Engineering Investigation Plan dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty five. That'll be marked as oh thirty seven. With markings by Mister Kleinberg on that.
Uh, just to clarify, I think we attach this to our original report, this one?
Yes, but because Mister Kleinberg made a mark on it, I wanted to identify it separately. If you'd be kind enough to write oh thirty seven on the top. Thank you. On page eight, you make a statement. That. Excavations in rock to the depth of approximately twenty five feet below the top of the rock at the high point of the ridge. Could lead to disturbance and weakening of the slope. Particularly if blasting is used. In your understanding, based on your review of the plans, is there any way to build this without blasting at this stage?
Yes, there are, and we've described in the language report.
Right now. When would it be appropriate? Strike that. If one does not know if the blasting is to be used and if there's no blasting plan provided. How would we be able to evaluate the likelihood of disturbance and weakening of the slope?
We we had recommended in in a, we have a list of recommendations that the planning board. Said requirements, and one of those is to have a a an excavation work plan certified by. By an engineer retained by the contractor performing the work. That would indicate the measures that would be taken to minimize the disturbance of the rock, the slope. Uh, to provide provisions to support the excavation and and to. It would do. Do what, what you just asked of us. And there and that there are experts, which I am not, that that would would, uh. Be be able to produce that, and it should be a requirement that they do.
Well. Without knowing if blasting is going to be used and without seeing that blasting plan. Are you in a position to evaluate the degree to which there would be, quote, disturbance and weakening of the slope?
That that has to be done during the during the construction.
Well, the blasting plan doesn't have to be done during the construction. That could be done.
No, but then it has, there has to be follow up with it, with with monitoring for the monitoring program and an evaluation by. A geologist or a geological engineer. And that's, and that's it would be if we were running a spectrum job, that would be included in the.
Well, my question was a little bit different. It was simply, without knowing if blasting is going to be used and without seeing a blasting work plan. Are you in a position to evaluate, quote, disturbance and weakening of the slope arising from blast?
Well, I'm not, but but at at this point in time, but this is, this is something that takes place later in the development of a project.
Yes, and the applicant has already agreed to that. Sorry, Mister Chairman, and the applicant has already agreed to that.
Well, that's very nice, but how does this board evaluate this plan from a public?
Like this hearing to continue ad nauseam. This is a process that we take very seriously, it is done as Mr. Kleinberg testified during the construction phase. So are we gonna get through Mr. Kleinberg's cross-examination with serious questions, or are you gonna continue to delay these proceedings? Which clearly is your client's goal.
That, that comment really should be struck from the record, it's inappropriate.
Okay, Mr. Klein.
So, Mr. Kleinberg, I thought I heard somebody say several meetings ago that you can control the blast, you can have a certain amount of explosives, you could put mats on it, you could do all kinds of stuff to make it so it's not gonna disturb as far away, you may have to do a lot more smaller blasts as opposed to one big blast.
All right.
Okay, so to his question, i- i- is, is there no way that they can blast this rock without disturbing the neighbors, or is there a way that they can blast it in smaller amounts and not disturb?
It, it can be done in a, in a controlled manner, in conjunction with the other types of special dislocality equipment.
Right, okay.
Line drilling, and all, all kinds of procedures. But that's really the contractor's genuity, and, and we would recommend that they be required to have a professional engineer certified approach.
Right, right, so knowing that, to his question, say your question again then, is it?
With respect, that wasn't my question, I wasn't directing my question to disturbance of the neighbors.
No, the question was. The slope, the slope, yeah, I'm sorry, the slope. Yeah, I, I was exaggerating by saying that would be such a big blast that even the neighbors would be offended.
Well, I'm not.
Well, I'm saying the smaller blasts.
We don't dismiss the impact on the neighbors of blasting, that's always an issue in many construction projects, what I'm focusing on is this very simple question. Blasting in these circumstances, as the engineer has said, quote, could lead to disturbance and weakening of the slope. That's at page eight of the report, my question is very simple. Are you able to evaluate, sitting here right now, without knowing if blasting is gonna be used, and without seeing a blast plan, what the level of disturbance and weakening of the slope will be? Yes or no? Are you able to do that sitting here today without the blast plan?
In my experience, when they put, when the, the experienced blaster is, is charged with, with doing his work, minimizes disturbing, it can be done. This takes place in Manhattan, where there are buildings on the property.
All right, Mr. Kleinberg, let's go back to the question asked, which I've now asked three times and has not been answered. It's a very simple question. Without knowing if blasting is gonna take place, and without seeing a blast plan, are you, as the independent expert evaluating slope stability, right now, able to evaluate what level of disturbance and weakening of the slope will take place? Yes or no? Are you in a position to make that evaluation now without seeing a blast?
Yeah, not yet, yeah. Okay, yeah, if you're gonna be, if you're gonna discount the way things, the, the way things are done in the construction industry, I cannot tell sitting here at this point in time. No, the answer is no, I can't tell.
That's all I ask.
But I know that it can be done.
I, lots of things can be done, this board has a public safety duty to know whether a project will be safe for the public, I'm simply asking, can you evaluate that issue right now?
It can be done so that it will protect the public.
You, we can go to March, that's not the question then, can you evaluate it right now, sitting here today?
No, I, I can't.
That's all the one.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sitting here, but I know that it can be evaluated if I was tasked with it. And it wouldn't be something I could do in a, in a five-minute interchain here, but it can be done.
Well, you don't have a blast plan anyway, so you couldn't do it right now no matter what, fair to say?
Right, right, that's correct, this is a plenty for that potential standard.
Ms. Kleinberg, there's no crime on the New Jersey law to simply answering yes or no, okay? If the question calls for that, please just.
Yeah, but the, 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 the answer, it tends to become, uh, it, it distorts the people.
Well, that's your view.
Just say you have to know, nothing can tell the whole story.
Well, I just wanna know, can you evaluate the level of risk of disturbance and weakening of the slope, based on what you have in front of you right now?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At page nine of your report, you make the statement the principal jointing pattern indicated jointing with dip favorably downward into the slope and steep nearly vertical joints. Now, are those the joints you were referring to last week when you said infiltration could take place and cause ultimate instability?
The, tho- those are parts of the system of joints, yeah.
Now, it then says some of the exposed rocks showed a series of tight vertical cracks spaced as close as one or two inches.
That's what we observed, and it, and they're not serious, they're very fine crack.
A series, it says, I was quoting what you said, you said a series of tight vertical cracks.
Right, but they're not, it, it, it's not unusual, nothing unusual is the observation.
In other words, it's not unusual on a ridge line to have that.
Right, and you need to move the rocks for sure soon.
Those cracks, those joints are what you were referring to at the last meeting, when you said water infiltration could cause a rock.
No, no, there, there might be wider cracks, but they're not evidence at the surface, there's very little rock exposed at the surface.
Okay, so when you said last week you don't know if the joints are there, you were referring to internally in the rock?
It's just a precaution that, that you, you.
When you said last week that we don't know if the joints are there, that's because you can't yet see inside the rock, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the surface joints that you see were different from what you were referring to last week when you said we couldn't see them?
Right, that's a, that's a possi- a, a remote possibility.
Well, why do you say it's remote? How do you know, you can't see?
Well, it's just based on, on the, uh, uh, it, it's based on the, the iterations of rock that have been made uh, in other, in other areas near the site, that's the way, that's just the way you have to do it if you can't see.
I'm not saying you have X-ray vision, I'm just asking, how do you know that it's a remote chance if you can't see inside the rock?
Because generally the joints are tight, and sometimes there were wider joints.
And you don't see wider joints on the surface, but you don't know if they're below?
Correct.
Okay. Now.
I don't know if they are there either.
I just said you don't know if they're there.
Right.
Okay. Now, if those joints are there, and water infiltrates ultimately, that will destabilize the rock, isn't that correct?
Not necessarily, we don't know, but it's a precaution you take, if you see them, you fill them.
If the joints are there, and water infiltrates, that's the factor that causes destabilization ultimately, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Now, you also say at page nine, you refer to a fault line, and you say tectonic jointing is reported to range from a few feet to many feet far from the mapped faults, but become closely spaced near the faults. Now, what is the reference and relevance of that to this project?
Uh, that, that's the, the, we, we have a series of references in there, it's the, uh, uh, the, uh, head rock theology of the fault weld wide wrangle map, and that's, I think that's the statement that comes out of that.
And that also refers to the second Watchon Ridge, right?
Right.
So these faults are present in this ridge, is that correct?
Well, no, it maps one, there's one fault shown, it's about two thousand feet from the site, it was, it was referenced by, uh, by Langen in their report. It's in there, it's in there, the, the location of it is in the report, it's about two thousand feet away, half a mile.
Right, but, but then you go on to say tectonic jointing is reported to range from a few feet to many feet far from the mapped faults. So how, and what is many feet? How far from the mapped fault? Do we see the tectonic jointing?
I'm sorry, uh, you're, you're talking about the, the spacing of the joints?
I'm, I'm just reading what you wrote, you said after the, you note that there's a fault line about two thousand feet from the site. And then you say tectonic jointing is reported to range from a few feet to many feet far from the mapped faults.
Right.
But become closely spaced near the fault, so what I'm saying is, how far is many feet?
Many, uh, well, many, many feet could be five or ten feet.
Could it be a thousand feet or two thousand feet?
It would be good if it was only a thousand, if it was a thousand feet.
Why?
The better spacing, the better, because then it's more, more impact solid rock.
And so we don't really know at this point from this reference whether it's better or worse, this condition?
Uh, right, but, but they, they identified joints, and the spacing is there, and there were joint spacings, then we came around the test boring, and there's a, there's a whole discussion of that, uh, in a back and forth between Langen and Princeton.
Now, you also mentioned you say at page fifteen, this is referring to the site itself. The rock formation, however, has a variable secondary permeability which is created by the complex network of intersecting fractures. Depending on the width of the fractures, the filling and surface roughness of cracks surcharged by water levels high up on the slopes can develop localized high hydrostatic pressures which could affect the local stability of the soil overgrowth. Now, what is this complex network of intersecting fractures, and where is it on the site?
Uh, that, the, the, the whole rock formation is cracked. And so we, it's all over.
So everywhere on this site where they wanna put these buildings, the rock formation is cracked?
Everywhere where there are buildings in the metropolitan area, the rock will crack.
Well, most buildings are not built on ridge lines on slopes that could collapse off.
But some are.
But some won't. Now, the point is, this building is on a network of intersecting fractures, is that correct?
Right, in almost all buildings.
I heard. Now, what is the size of those fractures? Is there any analysis done of that?
They, we just described, they were very fine cracks, they were roughly two inches apart, there were, there were ten or other cracks uh, that were, that were described in the Langen report.
And what were the other cracks? How wide?
Uh, I didn't get it, but it went directly, there are test bores that, uh, that were their core samples in the Langen level report, there were rock core samples, if you wanted to take a, a look at that.
Now, is it fair to say there are thousands of fractures where, say, building D will go?
Right, and that's typical.
I, I'm simply asking, is it fair to say there are many thousands of fractures where building D will go?
Right.
Okay. Now, when excavation is done, presumably joints that exist inside the rock may be seen or will be seen.
Correct.
Okay, now, who is responsible for filling those joints to avoid this infiltration of water that you spoke about last time?
That would be part of the excavation work plan that we recommend to having an engineer prepare uh, as part of the requirements for the instruction.
And what would be in the excavation work plan that would deal with this issue?
It would be the, uh, it would be the treatment of cracks.
In other words, the method of treating.
Right.
Now, who on site would ascertain and guarantee that these joints are in fact filled when they're identified?
There would be, uh, there would be a requirement for, for a specialist to do that work in the excavation work plan.
When you say specialist, who would that person be?
It would be a person who has a lot of experience in filling cracks and what?
So they would be there, presumably they'd fill cracks, and then what happens? Is there, is there grouting of those cracks inspected by some neutral person, or does the foundational work begin?
The, the, the treatment of the rock is completed, and then the foundation will begin.
So no inspector is actually gonna know to what extent grouting was actually done, because the foundation will go on top of it before any inspector sits, isn't that true?
No, you, you inspect the rock before you pour the concrete.
Well, I just asked you whether or not there's an inspector who's gonna examine the grouting before the foundation is poured.
Okay, I didn't understand, there, there is a, yes, there is, there, there would be. Any inspector.
Now, there could be thousands of potential cracks to be grouted, right?
Right.
And this is an eight-hundred-foot-long-by-two-hundred-foot excavation going down twenty-five feet, right?
Right.
Now, if cracks are not filled, and ultimately filled with water, that's what causes the destabilization, is that correct?
Well, then, where would the water come from?
Well, why are you raising it in the first place?
Well, so that the, that the water is controlled, that's why we recommended that they look at the infiltration basins so that they do not introduce water, otherwise there's, there's, uh, um, we're not sure the, in his groundwork there.
And you haven't had a confirmation yet on that issue?
Sorry?
You haven't had confirmation yet on that issue?
On, on what issue?
The examination of the infiltration basins.
No, we, I, I said that.
Okay, I wanted to clarify, thank you. Now, we'll get back to this page. We touched on this last week, the toe of the slope is the area that flattens out underneath the slope, so a slope may be here, and the toe comes here, as my hands have done.
Correct.
Now, would you agree that in this particular site, the slope under building or next to building, do you adjust above it? The toe of the slope is not on the applicant's property, but is actually on the private homes that are behind the slope?
There's a break in the slope, the slope flattens about halfway down the slope, and then the toe of the slope would be down near the road where the, with, with the houses are.
Yeah, the, the, so the toe of the slope's actually on those private properties, right?
I think it, it goes right to the street probably.
Okay, so it's on their houses?
Right.
On their lands. So the toe of the slope, to clarify, is on the private homeowner's land, correct?
I'm not sure that's the final toe, there, there's another, there's a couple hundred feet to the main road, so the well, the slope will still may continue beyond what the government controls, I didn't investigate that.
Okay, well, let me ask you this, the catchment area refers to an area in the toe of the slope that is designed to catch rocks and overburden other things that may come down the slope, isn't that correct?
I don't know what that is.
You don't know what a catchment area is?
No.
Well, it's actually in the township's steep slopes ordinance that refers to catchment areas um, being.
If, if you're talking about a rope with, a, a slope where there's, uh, a rockfall, which is not the case here, then you need an area to contain the rockfall, that's what you mean, and, and that's what it is.
Well, if there's no rockfall seen presently, you're saying? You're saying you haven't observed rockfall presently?
There, there's only, uh, small outcrops roughly ten feet high.
Well, if the ridge is destabilized by blasting, then there is a much greater likelihood of rockfalls.
Well, the, the blasting charges should be limited so that it won't be destabilized.
If mistakes are made, or a good plan is not used, and we've seen in many cases buildings collapse, and other structures collapse because of engineering problems, then rocks would slide, and you'd need a catchment area, isn't that fair to say?
No, not in this case.
Why not in this case? What, what, what makes you so sure?
This is essentially a soil slope with rock in it. It's not a rock slope, if you were to, there's another site down on the first Watchon Mountains on Northfield Road, where, where everything you're talking about exists there, but it doesn't exist here.
Well, if you destabilize the rock where we're gonna blast, that rock destabilizing could cause.
You're, you're gonna do it so that you don't.
Engineering is designed to cover when people make mistakes. Engineering is designed to cover when people make mistakes so people don't die. Would you agree with that proposition?
Uh, I've been doing it for fifty years.
Mr. Effron, I, I think we're going, he's answered the question as an expert. You keep asking him to answer the question the way you want it. He's answered the question three times.
Let me just ask this question.
And he answered it.
The reason, well, this is a different question. The reason we engineer. Is so we can build projects that minimize the risk to human life and property, isn't that fair to say?
And that's why we recommended that there be a certain, uh, excavation work plan certified by a professional engineer. Registered in the state of New Jersey.
Even though the planning board would not see that and not be able to evaluate.
We recommend that it be set as an requirement for the developer.
Thank you. But does that mean as a condition of approval after this is approved possibly? Or do you mean now, before the board votes?
I'm, I don't do municipal engineering myself, I don't know what this process, what, what, you know, what the. What the process is. I'm just telling you technically what's done.
That there's an excavation work plan and that's what should answer many of these questions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we, would you agree that these slopes we're dealing with here are steep slopes as defined by the town's steep slope ordinance?
I'm sorry.
Let me repeat that, I'm sorry. Would you agree that the slopes we're dealing with here are steep slopes as defined by the township's steep slopes ordinance? Unless you don't know.
I, uh, I, I, I don't know what the ordinance says exactly, the, uh. That has this report called them. Um, a, a moderate type of slope, but I'm not sure that the ordinance sets defines it as a steep slope. They're not, they're not particularly steep for the rock slopes.
Well, have you read these town's steep slopes ordinance?
No, I haven't.
Which does not apply to this application.
Well, yes, you're going to take the position that it was.
Okay, okay, whatever the position is, you're talking to him.
We're talking.
Let's continue.
Kleinberg is not a lawyer, he does not have to.
Right, okay, continue talking to him, please.
I just need one moment, I'm sorry, I have to find a line. Well, it's interesting, at page eleven, you speak of the slope hazard mapping on the Hazis map. And there you say. The slope angle on the upper slope, as determined by the spacing of contours created by aerial survey. Is steeper than indicated by the contours and ranges from seventeen to twenty nine degrees. Which may require a reevaluation of the Hazis class by the agency publishing the map. Doesn't that mean that other evaluations show a much steeper slope than the Hazis map shows?
Right, but the, the, uh, the, the stability analyses that were performed address that.
I, I'm just asking a question, you just said the Hazis.
Also, a twenty nine degree slope is, is not a steep slope.
Yes, but fifteen percent is what qualifies as steep slope on most municipal rules.
Most highway invasions have twenty nine degree slope.
Yes, but most municipalities use a fifteen percent.
He's not talking about that, he's talking about, let him, he's testifying to something, something is reported, now you're talking about something else where most slopes are.
We're not building a highway, right?
Correct.
We're not building a highway, right, Mr. Kleinberg?
No.
That's all, we're not building a highway. Thank you. Now. It also says at page eleven, we were not able to obtain additional background information. On the basis of the classification in time for this review. What does that mean?
The, uh, the, the map is referring to the, uh, this landslide. Um, mapping for Essex County, the New Jersey, prepared for the New Jersey Geological Survey. It's referenced in the Langen reports. And the report showed identifies a class three, I think, uh, uh, um. Level of concern, and that, that's all included in the Langen reports. And so the, it just, the, the map just states that, but they, they're not describing. Why they made that classification or what the mechanism of a landslide would be. In that particular area, we cannot find the basis for their finding.
And what does class three refer to?
It's a haz, it's a H A Z U S classification. Um, it's a, it's an agent, it's a new government agency that. That investigates certain types of hazards, including landslides.
I mean, what does class three mean?
It's, it's, it's a moderate or, or, um, it's a moderate risk.
Moderate risk of what?
Landslide.
So Building D is going to be placed. Just above a slope with a moderate risk of landslide, is that fair to say?
Well, there, there was an investigation done that, that indicated that instability. At, 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 at the, when it's completed, but we have a couple of other issues that we missed, but. That the, the, there's done a more thorough investigation that was done, the people who made the classification. And so far, it hasn't indicated instability exists on the slope.
Yes, but class three was indicated by the agency, right?
Right, but they don't do it. They did not do test boings and, and stability analyses and, and, and that sort of thing, as far as we know.
And why do you mention as a relevant factor that you couldn't get information on the basis of the classification? If it doesn't matter, why even bother mentioning?
Uh, be, because we, because it, it, it needs, they needed to be, to provide an explanation, in my opinion. Otherwise, uh, it's misleading. Usually the maps have a text on them and this has no legend or text or anything on the map.
Thank you. Uh, in the last sentence of that paragraph, you say. The analyses performed by both Langen and Princeton Hydro do not, in our opinion, indicate instability under the assumed condition. What do you mean by assumed conditions? What are they?
Well, there, there are the conditions that are shown on the cross-sections and in the profiles and, uh. That are done based on the exploration.
Okay, so you're just referring to the data that was provided by Langen?
Right.
Okay, thank you. At page twelve, you say that the overburdened soils were reported to have been classified visually. There were no index testing results such as moisture content and grain size tests indicated in the result, in the report. Two unconfined compression tests were performed on samples of the basalt bedrock. Now. When you say the overburdened soils were reported to have been classified visually, who did that report of the visual classification?
Langen.
Langen, okay. And you say there is no index testing results such as moisture content and grain size tests. What does that refer to?
That refers to you take a, a sieve and a series of sieves and you shake the sand through the sieves. And you break it down into different sizes of grains.
And what's the relevance of finding that information out?
Uh, it, it's, and it, it, it provides additional criteria to come up with. Uh, soil strength parameters, permeability of a whole bunch of engineering properties.
Are those important?
Right, the, there were investigations, an investigation done by Sora Engineering. For the applicant as well, and they did do the index testing.
Thank you. At page thirteen, you refer to. The fact that Hydro reviewed, Hydro inferred stratigraphy. And that Langen did a general stratigraphy. Could you explain what those two terms mean, inferred versus general stratigraphy?
Uh, that may have been a, a, a poor choice of words, but it inferred means that you do, uh, for you. Hundred feet apart, and then you, uh, and then basically the, the. Practice is to interpolate between the two points that you know where the strata are. And you have to infer that the conditions between follow that general trend. They don't necessarily do that, but you won't know until you get.
And what is general stratigraphy mean? You use both terms.
I know, I just, maybe I should have said inferred twice. It also general could be inferred.
Well, what did you mean by general, because you used two different words?
I was not that careful at that point. I did, but it, but they both mean roughly the same thing. Just enough.
You mentioned at page fourteen. That. Langen reported a joint set dipping downward to the east on a slope of seventeen degrees. Then you go on to say, a downward dip to the east is not, in our experience, a favorable inclination. Which would be downward toward the west. What do you mean by this?
What I mean is that, uh, they reported, just read their report, and they said it was seventeen degrees. It was dipping seventeen degrees in an easterly direction, which is down slope.
No, I understand you're reciting what's in their report, but what did you mean by your conclusion? That the, um, eastern inclination is not a favorable one, the favorable one would be downward toward the west.
If the joints dip in the direction of the slope, then there's, it reduces, i- i- it. It reduces the safety factor against slide, but they assumed the thirty five degree angle, which is twice. Uh, we, uh, thirty five degree friction angle, which means that the, the rock joint wouldn't slide. That it was only sloping seventeen degrees.
What's their basis for that assumption of a thirty five degree friction angle?
Uh, it's a, it's a fairly representative value and, and based on, and they, they had people go over the rock joints and they saw.
Well, if it is fine the way they did it, why did you comment? That the downward dip to the east is not a favorable inclination, which would be downward toward the west?
I believe in the report, it was referenced as a favorable, and we didn't agree with that.
That's because gravity will tend to cause rock to move in the direction with its less support. And in this case, that would be to the east, is that fair to say?
Right.
Thank you. You also make a statement that Langen, in their rebuttal. Strike that. You make the statement that when you read Langen's rebuttal. CME was not able to identify the section of core from which the samples were taken. This is again at page fourteen. Could you explain that statement?
Uh, they, we, we're looking at it, they, they took two core samples and they were close together, they were taken from the same rock core. And we could not identify the piece that was used in the. There, there's photographs. And nobody drew a circle on the photograph and said, this is the piece we took the sample.
So what does it mean that you couldn't identify that?
We, we couldn't.
No, I mean, what's the significance of it that caused you to make this reference?
Well, it would have been interesting to know which piece of rock core they selected from the photograph.
And why would it be interesting to know that? That's my question.
I, I, it, it, we, it, the, um. Uh, it would be, it, it would have been good to have seen the rock before it was subjected to the test. They do have pictures of the rock core in their, in their thing, before, before it was subjected to the compression test.
And, and why would it have been good to see that first?
It would not particularly important that we could see it, but we couldn't, we, we couldn't see it.
So you make a point of noting this, but it's not particularly important, is that what you're saying?
I did that, yes.
Move on. Move on.
I'm not sure why you're saying move on, I think that was actually a very important point.
Not in his opinion, he's the expert.
You are the experts who judge ultimately, and you need to hear the full level of detail of lack thereof in the report.
Opinion, it wasn't important, he just noted it, so we heard it. Thank you.
Quick question.
Mr. Klein.
So, how many of the core samples didn't have the circle in the photograph to tell them which pieces were used?
Well, they only took samples from one core.
Oh, so there's only one core and they just didn't identify which piece of the core?
They didn't locate the, I, I couldn't see on the core which piece was the one that they removed from the core about. And trimmed it, you have to.
Right, right.
Uh, and everything, I, I, I couldn't see that on the post.
Could they identify it, or is it too late now?
Uh, I'm, I'm sure somebody from Langen.
Okay.
Identify, I don't think it's that significant.
When you looked at the whole core, did you see like a section that you wished they had studied instead of?
No.
Okay.
But I did look at, they, they, they have a photograph.
Right, of the whole core, and whether they took this piece up here or they went down six more inches and took that piece, pretty similar, or?
Right.
All right.
You see, Mr. Kleinberg, the problem I'm having is that as a lawyer, I assume what you put in the report is important, or you wouldn't put it in the report. So I keep asking you questions about the statements you make, and then you keep saying, well, they're not important. I'm trying to understand why you cared about whether you could see this piece of rock.
I would, it, it, it would have been good to see which piece they, they took, it, it would, um. It, but it's in the, in the big picture of things, it's not that significant, but I did put it in the report.
I, I, I'm still trying to understand what would be the value to seeing it, that's what I'm asking you. You couldn't see it, you don't know where it is, it may have been destroyed. What is the value of this point?
When you look at the cores, there are a number of joints. And fractures on the existing cores, and it would, it would have been good to, it would, it would. I, if I, I, when I was looking for the piece, I would, would have wanted to see the piece that they took, that they selected for the sample.
How deep was that core?
And that, I think, was at the top surface of the rock, and it was, and I think the cores ran generally five feet. And then they would stop and, and take the core sample out, put the barrel down and take and run it along the pipeline.
Thank you. You also make a statement that. You're referring to different, um. Compressive strength measures on page fourteen. This is in the. Sorry, you all right?
Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, this is in the paragraph headed Basalt Bedrock. Now you say, after addressing two compressive measures. You say the results are a small fraction of the anticipated strength range for basalt. And roughly equivalent to that of a low to medium strength concrete.
Right.
Now, what are you trying to say there? You're making, you're making a comparison, you're saying the results of these compression tests are a small fraction. Of the anticipated strength range for basalt. Now, let's deal with that first, what does that mean?
That means that the, um, that means that the strength of the soil. Uh, it's typically, when, when, it is typically about thirty thousand PSI. And these were about three thousand PSI, and each of the engineers involved observed the same form. Uh, Princeton Hydro, uh, Wenogre and Langen also, Wenogre.
And so you're saying that this particular basalt, basalt is not as strong as one normally would expect for basalt, is that correct?
It, it, um, the sa, the sample, uh, was not as strong. But the, we don't know if the rest of the rock is, if that's typical of the rest of the rock.
But the part that was tested showed that it's much, much weaker than basalt normally is, isn't that fair to say?
Correct.
Now, then you said, and these results were quote roughly equivalent to that of a low to medium strength concrete.
Right.
Because concrete is not, does not have the cohesive cohesion of basalt or other forms of rock. And so you're saying this basalt is actually more akin in strength and weight than strength to cement. Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm sorry, you said, it, I, I didn't. you you said more than
I'll re- I'll rephrase it.
Yeah.
You're saying here that this basalt actually, in terms of its um weight bearing strength, is equivalent only to a low to medium strength concrete.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. What do you mean when you say Langen attributed the quote unusually low strength to porosity and crystalline grain size characteristics in the rock? I'll I'll I won't say the rest of the sentence, but what does that mean? That they attributed this low strength, this unusually low strength to porosity and crystalline grain size characteristics of the rock?
That's what they said, and I was just well.
Oh, do you have any knowledge of that factor one way or the other?
No.
Okay, thank you. So basically, this rock is much weaker than rock normally would be in this class. And it actually is equivalent in strength to a relatively low grade cement. Is that fair to say?
Concrete.
Concrete.
I yes, that's what I'm saying. I get that particular piece of core. I don't know about the rest of them.
Right, and we don't have any other measures, right?
Right.
So the one that we have shows that this rock base is no better than a low to moderate grade concrete. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say.
Thank you. Would you agree that this ridge formation in our area is a product of glacial action at some point?
Sorry?
Would you agree that this ridge formation is a product of glacial action at some point?
It's not a product of it. It was it was a product before the glacier arrived.
The igneous intrusion was much earlier, millions of years earlier. But the glacier
Hundreds of millions.
Hundreds of millions of years earlier, and the glacier, though, which retreated ten thousand years ago, carved out areas that left ridges. Is that fair to say?
The there was a tremendous force of ice on the top of
Right, and so these ridges collapsed either because of the weight of ice or because of the force of ice moving. Is that fair to say?
They didn't necessarily collapse. I don't know that they collapsed.
Well, the ridge didn't exist naturally like that. Part of it was cut away by glacial action at some point, leaving the ridge. Is that correct?
I think the ridge is the end of the uh of the the volcanic flow. I'm I'm not true. I I'm not a geologist.
I I don't want you to answer if you can't. I apologize.
I I can't. I I I'm not. It's my impression that that's the end of the flow of the block.
But you don't really know as a base of expertise?
No.
Okay, and I will not I will not trouble you with those close. Now. When we spoke last time, you said that in your view, the one point five safety factor in the Army Core manual was appropriate for this project and that the two point zero factor would normally be for projects like dams and things like that.
Right.
And you said, however, if the building were built on the slope, you would apply the two point oh factor.
Yes, that's what that's what I would do, not because it's required, but that's what I would do.
As a matter of engineering practice, that's what you would do if it were built on the slope.
Yeah, but the buildings aren't being built on the slope.
But if the building were built on the slope, it wouldn't just be resting on the soil. It would be excavated into the bedrock that forms the ridge, right?
Mr. Chin.
I don't know.
You don't know?
What if? What if it was built in Japan?
Excuse me, it's not built in Japan. It's built just a few feet below the ridge. It stands on the same
On the slope.
The point I'm raising is you don't put a building on top of the topsoil. The question is if he would give a two point oh safety factor if it was built on the slope, which means it's anchored into the bedrock, it's the same bedrock structure it's being anchored to on top.
Bruce, you're an engineer.
But you're you're
You're testifying as an engineer.
I'm posing a problem to the witness. So if, in fact, a building on the slope would be anchored into the same bedrock structure that would be anchored into when it's on top, why would you give a two point oh only when it's anchored into the bedrock on the slope and not the top?
We're talking about the stability of the structure. We're talking about the stability of the slope.
I know. So why would you use a two point oh safety factor if it's anchored in the bedrock on the slope, but not if it's anchored in the same bedrock on the top?
Because the forces would be much higher on it. If it was on a slope, then it then it would be if it was where they're going to put it.
Now, if the rock under this building D were fractured and not properly grouted, and if there were other friable or other destabilizing elements under that rock, the entire structure could collapse and with it part of the slope. Isn't that fair to say?
No, it's not fair to say.
Well, the structure collapsed on the rock under the structure would go down partly on the slope, wouldn't it? It'd have to.
This this is not an extremely heavy building and it's and and the the condition of the rock, and there are buildings all over the Palisades that were built on um in situations like this.
Well, those are older buildings. That's not modern practice, right?
We have a thirty foot high retaining wall Palisades that that I designed.
Right, but that when did you design it?
Uh before COVID.
Okay, but we're not normally putting buildings on ridge lines in New Jersey as a typical matter, are we?
Don't test the family. We're normally doing. Ask him a question about
It's an engineering question.
But you said we're not normally doing this. You can ask him if we're not normally doing this, but you're testifying.
It's a question I said. We're not normally building buildings on the top of ridge lines in New Jersey, are we, in modern practice? It was a question.
Okay.
You may not like it, but it was
Then he may answer if he has the answer.
We're not normally doing this as a typical matter on ridge lines any longer in New Jersey, are we?
Sorry? I I I I it of course we are.
As a regular practice in New Jersey, or is this an exception?
If if it's doable. If somebody asks to ask me to do it, I would design it.
Look, you with engineering and enough money, many things are doable. I simply asked the question. We are no longer doing this as a regular building practice in New Jersey, are we?
Nobody told me that.
Yeah, you're an engineer who's worked in the field for many years. I'm simply asking you a question based on your knowledge as an engineer in this state. Can you answer it?
But he answered it.
I said he answered it. Yes, you. Yes, we are building, building, designing this one.
No, I didn't ask whether we ever are. I asked, is it normal? Is it currently a typical practice?
Look, I have no normal percentage.
I don't understand, Mr. Klein, why you're reacting that way. I'm simply asking an engineer, what's a typical practice today in modern engineering in our state? I think it's a perfectly reasonable question.
So you need to know how many acres of land are on ridge lines? And then what percentage of is that a ball of the land? And then what percentage of buildings are on ridge?
That may be your way of analyzing it, but I'm simply asking whether, to his knowledge as an engineer, buildings on ridge lines are typically constructed in modern practice in New Jersey.
And he already answered.
I'm not sure what the answer was. He said, no one told me.
He'll do.
If they would do it, if 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 it's if you need to put the building there, you'll do it.
Is it a typical practice any longer in most municipalities to allow buildings to be built on top of ridge lines? A simple question.
If if you're saying that there are ordinances that say that you're not, I'm not aware of. And I didn't read the what's not, where there's a restriction on building on
So my question is simply, are you able to answer whether buildings on top of ridge lines are typically constructed as a general matter in New Jersey, or is this an exception to general practice in the modern context?
Well, I think I gave you my opinion. It's not an exception. That's my opinion. I I don't know what else to say. I'll be answered.
Well, there is a steep slope ordinance in
Well, he didn't talk about no, when talking about ordinance, he said, you ask specifically.
I'm asking you a question.
You ask, can they be built? And he said, yes, he said he's not aware of ordinances. He said that. I think we're done with the ordinance. Thank you.
You would agree that under the Army Core, the higher safety factor of two point oh is appropriate, where a slope failure would have severe consequences to life or property?
Right, and they're talking about it. They're talking about huge dams structures, what they're talking about in that reference.
Well, let's take a look at that.
And when and when they said we're ordinary slope, one point five is adequate.
Well, just a moment. It says in section seven dash twelve for major concrete structures, dams, lockwalls, basin walls, which retain the dam and bank and et cetera, the minimum required safety factor is two point oh. That's in section seven dash twelve. However, you would have to agree that section eight dash thirteen speaks of applying a safety factor of two point zero in general circumstances for major rock slopes where the consequence of failure is severe. And in section eight dash thirteen A, they don't talk about limiting that to dams and similar functions, do they?
No, but but in other references, they they reference one point five with adequate slope.
Yes, but in the section eight dash thirteen A, it says where the failure of a slope will have severe consequences, the appropriate standard is two point oh. Isn't that what it says? See, that's a real question. Isn't that what the Army manual says?
Uh that's what it says for the structures that you're talking about, and this is and this is not what they're talking about.
Well, I'm gonna hand this to you then. If they could look, if eight point one three has any reference to limitation dams and things of that nature. And if you can find it, we'll show it to you.
I brought the wrong pair of glasses today. Or read it to me. I I can't.
I'm not gonna read a paragraph. Um
No.
Well you know the Army You know the Army code then, right? The Army manual code, right?
Sorry?
You know the Army Core manual, right?
I know it exists. I can't quote a chapter or a verse or anything. Well, I don't know what you mean, who I know. Yes, I I've I've I downloaded it. I looked through it. And there were references that for the situation that we're in, one point five is adequate.
And you are not in a position to dispute, because you don't have your glasses, that section eight dash thirteen A through G does not refer to specialized projects such as dams and things like that.
I believe it does.
Eight point one three, eight dash thirteen? And for major rock slopes where the consequence of failure is severe, the minimum required calculated factor of safety is two point oh.
This is not a rock slope to begin with. It's a soil slope for the most part.
Well, we've been analyzing the rock's strength all along. Now you tell us it's not a rock slope?
They none of this, none of the failure surfaces that that were referenced as significant in the in the reports were were passing through rock. They were passing through soil.
Well, we've analyzed rock repeatedly in your presentation and in your report. And you made the point and you made the point that there could be joints that we don't know about, and you say there are thousands of smaller joints. And it seems to me the purpose of talking about that was because failure of that rock could have severe consequences. Isn't that why you talk about it in your report? Isn't that why you talk about it in your report?
We talk about it as a as a precaution that we easily take into account with designs. You always you're you're always commenting that this could occur. I don't know that it doesn't.
None of us have that skill to predict the future. And engineering is designed to take into account things we may not expect to happen, but may very well. Isn't that correct?
Very well.
Thank you.
But for this case, the safety factor of one point five is adequate, in my opinion.
And you would agree, however, your report focuses on rock safety, doesn't it?
Sorry?
And you would agree that your report focuses almost entirely on the safety and structure of the rock. Isn't that true?
We 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 do reference in a number of various precautions that should be taken when you have rock underlying the slope.
Almost all of your report report deals with the quality and structure and safety of the rock. Isn't that true?
Well, it's true, but the stability analysis, the rock, the the rock does not come into play in the in the that were done by both the engineering programs.
Well, I'm simply asking if this is a slope where rock is a major feature, then the failure of it would fall under section eight dash thirteen, wouldn't it?
Stability analyses don't exist, don't don't indicate that there that there would be a failure.
Well, eight point eight dash thirteen doesn't say only if the stability analysis indicates a likelihood. It simply says where the consequence of failure is severe, the minimum required factor is two point oh.
What you're referencing is a design manual for heavy duty engineering projects, and this is not it's not applicable, in my opinion, to this this particular situation.
And you're saying that section seven dash twelve, which refers to a safety factor of one point five for other kinds of buildings, is like you would agree that section seven dash twelve, which refers to the one point five safety factor, is in this same section of the manual. Listen. They're in the same section of the manual, aren't they? You want my glasses?
Just just give me a bit.
Except for last question.
Okay.
We're we're getting late and we're gonna carry this.
Um are this from the same manual. There's a thing in seven point one two.
Yeah.
And what it says is for retaining walls, ordinary type structures, the safety factor of one point five is adequate.
I know, and that's in the same section as eight dash thirteen that refers to places where there can be major consequences, the safety factor is two point oh. So isn't it a fact that this is not referring only to dams and structures like that?
Right.
But to perfectly ordinary buildings?
Right, and then you say one point five safety factor is adequate to retain.
But when you said eight point one three is only in the section dealing with dams and similar structures, that was not correct.
Yeah, I'm reading for the second seven, seven one two.
Well, we're at eight point one, eight dash three, as it's limited to things such as dams, earth and werewolves. Does it? Do you now have an assistant reading for you?
Well, I'm sorry. I broke my glass.
We can revisit this another time, because with chess, as we should end anyways. I have a little more left, but I think we have to stop. So if I would ask you to please read eight point eight dash thirteen for the next meeting, we can go over that subject. My question is very simply, does section eight dash thirteen, don't answer it now, because you don't have your glasses. Does section eight dash thirteen limit it?
What's the name of the manual?
It's the Army Core manual. It's EM, it's section EM one, 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 zero dash one dash two, nine, zero, eight.
Continue. What's the
What's the word?
Sliding stability is chapter seven. And chapter eight is titled Design Considerations.
The manual is for rock foundation. The the manual is, I I think the title of the manual is rock.
Well, we can resolve that at the next meeting then, since we don't have the cover with us, but um
It's section eight dash thirteen, even that it's designed for
I'm not gonna be around the tent, but that just means it's gonna do a little channel right. Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Kleinberg.
May I? Thank you, Mr. Kleinberg. Thank you.
PB twenty-four dash oh one, West Texas Highlands, Inc., Block one seventy-nine, Lot thirty-two, Zone IH one, Warner Road, will be carried to the December tenth special meeting at six o'clock PM in Council Chambers. The next regular planning board meeting six thirty, I'm sorry, six thirty. We uh a public meeting will be at six thirty PM in Council Chambers. And the next regular planning board meeting will be January seventh, twenty twenty-six, at seven thirty PM via Zoom.
Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry. I was writing and couldn't hear you. Let me just clarify the date. I couldn't hear you. December thirteen at what time?
No, no, ten.
Ten.
December ten at six thirty PM in Council Chambers.
December ten, six thirty. Thank you.
Yes, do I have a motion to adjourn? And all in favor? Pose. The eyes are above the nose. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.